All right, it is 5 o'clock on Monday, December 14th. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Wassa Board of Education.
Jim Boucher?
Here.
Jeff Lee?
Here.
Conal Wolf?
Here.
Beth Martin?
Here.
Matty?
Yes.
Jay Bruce?
Here.
Lance Charla?
Here.
Lee Wester?
Present.
All right, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on the agenda is reading of the mission statement, thank you. It is the mission of the Wassa School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Agenda item five, public and student comment. Okay, it looks like we have one individual for public comment. So I will go over some of the rules if you will, and while I'm doing that, Dana Parlier, if you would like to make your way to the microphone here. So, public comment is limited to three minutes, and Clerk Peck will have some indicators there for 30 seconds and for time. Let's see here. Speakers shall direct all comments to the Board, not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name or through the use of sufficiently detailed descriptions so as to identify the individuals staff or student referenced are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk if anything they say during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. At this time, if you could state your name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes, thank you.
Hi, I'm Dana Parlier, RP's. Address 2282 1154th Avenue. I've worked in the Wassa School District at John Mayer for the last six years, and I teach math. Tonight, I'm here representing the Wassa Education Association. President Mossens had a family obligation and couldn't be here, so he sent me. I have just some positives to share with all of you. First of all, the WAA recently recertified with WERC as a union, so we're very proud of that communication and that relationship that we have with you and the state of Wisconsin. Second, under the direction of Wassa East educator Rob Hughes, the Wassa educators raised $10,531 for our annual Thanksgiving turkey drive. Thanks to all of you who generously donated to this wonderful cause. This effort speaks to Wassa citizens helping other Wassa citizens at a time of obvious need. The altruistic nature of the educational community cannot be stretched enough during this difficult time in our nation's history. Thank you. I have a list of schools and charities that turkeys and hams were delivered to, and I gave them to Cassie, and she'll get those to you. Basically, anyone who asked for one, received one. WEA is very proud of this effort. Next, WEA on behalf of the entire teaching staff would like to thank the Board and Longfellow for recognizing the need for a four-day school week for elementary students and staff. To be sure, our educators are still on the job on Fridays, but the ability to plan for this very different and difficult educational modality has made all of their lives much more professionally satisfying and manageable. Thank you. Continuing, the WEA leaders from Executive Committee to the Representative Council would like to thank Dr. Hiltz and Tabitha Gundrum for their continuing efforts in regards to workplace safety concerns that we have shared with all of you. Your willingness to listen and respond have been appreciated, and we continue to have progressive discussions to improve workplace safety for our students and staff. Lastly, on behalf of all WEA members, we want to wish the Board of Education and Longfellow staff a very safe and peaceful holiday season. Enjoy the time with your families. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Okay, agenda item six.
Sorry, Clerk President, I got here a couple minutes late, I just wanted to provide a public comment. So, the Board policy is, we actually just recently did renew or did do this policy over stating that individuals had to be here at the start of the meeting. I don't, I would, I guess, does any Board members have any concerns? No, okay, so we could just have this filled out. Just give it some more time.
So just as a reminder for anybody that is listening tonight, for public and student comment, we take the sign-up sheet at the start of the meeting, and after that, if you haven't signed up, then you've missed the opportunity to speak in the meeting. As a reminder, please state your name and address for the record.
John Krieger, address is 151008 Juniper Lane, Wassa. Dear Board members, by now you've probably seen the dozens of articles and medical experts confirming our children must return to school. These articles and experts, including Dr. Fauci, have also confirmed that transmission occurs outside of schools and children are not super spreaders. The Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association conducted a study of 30,000 Wisconsin students and confirmed, quote, "These findings suggest that participation in sports is not associated with an increased risk of COVID-19 among Wisconsin high school student athletes," end quote. The WIAA also states, quote, "It is essential to the physical and mental well-being of student athletes in grades six through 12 to return to organized physical activity and build team relationships with their peers and coaches." CDC guidelines for quarantine have also been revised, and most districts in the area have already adopted these recommendations. Why hasn't the Wassa School District? Now this Board has been presented with information about failing grades, which highlights that your decisions have negatively impacted our students' abilities to achieve academic success, crippled the ability for our teachers to effectively teach students in this district, and along with certain actions by the administration promoted a toxic culture among teachers and staff within our district. You should not be looking at this data tonight and think to yourselves that you've made the right decisions along the way, especially while all other school districts in Marathon County and much of the state have remained open with in-person learning. The data that will be discussed tonight demonstrate that children need in-person learning to achieve academic success. We need to teach our children and the students of this district that together we can make difficult decisions in the best interest of their futures and their mental health. No one denies the virus is real. Some of us choose to base our decisions upon the facts and science presented, which demonstrate we can live, live with, and mitigate the virus. We know who to protect and who is most vulnerable. Therefore, we can make decisions based off those facts. The mental health of our students is suffering. I'm sure all of you on this Board and in this room have also read the numerous articles of deepening depression and suicides taking place around the country. You're kidding yourself if you don't think that these suicidal thoughts, deepening depression and anxiety, aren't occurring right here in our community. I hope you will consider returning our students to full in-person learning before a darker tragedy befalls this district and our community. At a minimum, give parents the choice to have their children return to full in-person learning. We need to start putting the children first. Thank you.
Agenda item six, approving the consent agenda. I'd like to acknowledge donations to the district. Donors include Christine Rainbow, Crystal Fisher, Karen Wong, Office Depot, Rib Mountain Cycles, Action Gift Fund, Brad and Robin Bichanich, Jan Slaton, Donald and Carrie Zaramski, Roxanne Zaramski, and Robert and Mary Ellen Zulliger. With that, I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda with great gratitude for donations to the district.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda, agenda item number seven, we have to approve the 2019-2020 audit report, and Mr. Chuck Krieger from Hawkins Ash CPAs is going to present results to the Board.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to let you know that Noel Tordson is here tonight, and Noel Tordson should get most of the credit for the collaboration that goes on between the business office and the auditor. Noel does have a staff with him, I'm not going to name them all, but Noel leads that staff. So Chuck Krieger from Hawkins Ash is here tonight, and remember that you hire him as a school board. He's auditing our books on your behalf, so he's not going to go through the whole audit report, page by page, I don't think at least, but he's going to hit some of the highlights. So, you've seen him before, Mr. Chuck Krieger.
All right, thank you. I guess just to reiterate what Bob mentioned, it is a collaboration amongst your office staff. This year, there was a switch in one of the personnel. Janet Toos went from her original role to doing payroll to take place of retiree, and from my perspective, there was basically no change, okay? You expected, you know, sometimes there was a roadblocks that come up, a little bump in the road. In this case, there was maybe a really little bump in the road. There was very, nothing noticeable from a efficiency standpoint with us getting done with the audit, so that was greatly appreciated, and everybody pitched in to do a good job. So I will spend just a few minutes going over the audit report. If you've got it, it's the longer report that's in your materials, and it is up on the screen, so. First item, if you go to pages three through five, this is the auditor's, independent auditor's report. Basically delineates responsibility, indicates what it is, what management is responsible for, what the auditors are responsible for, and at the top of page four, it gives the opinions. And I would say this is really what you're paying for, the opinion that the financial statements are materially correct in all, presented fairly in all material respects financial position of the district, okay? It's the best opinion you can get, it's what we call a clean opinion. After that, there's some other matters that, there are additional items presented in your financial statement that are required based on you getting federal and state aid and some of those types of items. After the independent auditor's report, there's about 10 or 12 pages of management discussion and analysis, and Noel puts this together for us. It's labeled management's discussion and analysis, which would indicate that management should put it together. In many of my smaller districts, we comprise the material and management approves it. In your case, Noel takes care of putting all of this together, along with his staff, and he does a really nice job because it indicates items that are up or down and how they affect your fund balance and your operations, okay? So if we look at the big picture, this year, your fund balance went up for the current year, and it's up to around 30% of your total expenditures. Now, everybody might say, hey, that sounds great, and it does on the surface, but given what we know about COVID, cutbacks in expenses, less medical because doctors' offices and clinics were closed down, the increase in fund balance issue will probably be offset with a decrease in fund balance in 2021, okay? Because all that stuff starts to ramp back up and go the other direction. So if you were thinking, hey, we're ahead of the game, you may be a little bit, but it's probably temporary in your case. So if we take a look at some of the major items, if you go to pages like 11 and 12, this shows some of the expenses, and a lot of this is summarized, so here's change in net position, program revenues, as you can see, your property taxes and state aids make up the majority of your funding, and obviously, instruction makes up the biggest percent of your expenditures. Since you're in the business of providing educational services, that just makes sense, okay? Moving on to the, if you want to keep going there, we're looking at pages, let's say, so here's at bottom, page 12, governmental activities, these are the net costs, you have total cost of services, and then in most cases, there are some fees that might be collected from an instructional standpoint, you might get some state grants that are specific for a program, and that reduces the cost of the service to the district. Now, when you look at the net cost of services, it's still $106 million. Well, that's paid for by property taxes and state general aid typically. Pie chart to kind of indicate the breakout of the expenses. And then there's a breakout of the revenue section. As I mentioned, general state aid, property taxes make up the vast majority of, in your case, over 90% of the funding for your operation. Now, when you go to the next page, there's some information on budget variances. Again, budget to actual issue, I think was probably difficult to gauge and to judge and to track, just because of the upheaval from COVID. And from one week to the next, one month to the next, it was hard to say what was going to happen, where you were going to incur costs, where you might be able to save some costs and that type of thing, although a large percentage of your expenses are in the salary and benefits area. Salaries are pretty well set based on contracts, but the benefits, as I mentioned earlier, you're going to have some decrease in benefits this year just because of the self-insurance program for your health insurance. There was just less usage of the health insurance, dental insurance, from a shutdown of operations, not on your part, but on the business part, on the providing areas. So if we go on to page 15, just shows some breakdown on capital assets. You might not realize it, but you have almost $170 million in capital assets in the district. That's buildings, equipment, furniture, land, land improvements, and you have some construction progress at the end of the year. Depreciation offsetting some of that, $113 million, and you're left with $120,000 of net assets. We go to page 17, well, stopped there, got ahead of myself. Okay, page 16, long-term debt, mill rates. As you can see, you've got debt service levies, mill rates up somewhat. You had in 2015, referendum for about $30 million for additions and improvements of various districts, buildings, but you, your actual cost based on increasing property valuation and that type of thing, most residents didn't notice much of a change in their portion that related to debt service, okay? And that's, all comes back to, you get good bond ratings when you take out debt because you're in solid financial position. And the last item on the, in this management discussion area, page 17, factors bearing on the district's future. Talked about prepaying debt, current economic conditions, we all kind of know what's going on there, shifting student demographics. You know, you've had studies over the last years on closing this site, opening this site, reshuffling students between locations, and that's, I think that's a constant sort of juggling the numbers sort of activity. It's always something that needs to be considered as demographics and building capacity changes. So that's the quick overview of that. I guess the only other items I would like to mention, and then I'll open it up if you've got questions. Number one, there were no new accounting pronouncements adopted this year. There were some that are on the horizon, including student activities being shifted from a, what they call a fiduciary custodial fund, into a more of a fund under the direction or control of the district. If you're looking at the funds in the DPI structure, it's from Fund 60 to Fund 21, and that will be required to make that change. You won't notice it in the operational aspect of the student activities, but it will be reported next year differently on your financial statements. And then another one down the horizon is leases. You do a fair amount of lease activity for copiers, printers, computers, that type of thing. There'll be some changes in that area, but again, operationally, there'll be no change on how you handle stuff. From a financial point of view, it'll look different when that is implemented. And the last thing to mention, and it's nothing that you have control over, but based on the stock market, I guess, the WRS typically is a very well-funded retirement system. It generally goes between probably about 96% funded up to 100, 203% funded. What I mean by that is they, the WRS figures out how much they're going to have to pay into the future for retirees, people that are currently active who are going to be on retirement, and then they look at what their investments are at, and at the end of the 630-20 fiscal year, the investments or assets exceeded the expected liabilities by about 2.5 to 3%, which shows up in one of our reports as a huge asset on your books. As I say, whenever the asset shows up, that means, it doesn't mean you can go out and spend it, because the next year, if the market goes down, you're going to see a liability, which also doesn't mean you have to pony up for that one. But just be aware that you might see some stuff in the footnotes that, while our liabilities went down by $20 million, I didn't think we spent $20 million on reducing debt. Well, $13 million of that is because WRS went from a liability to an asset. I know that was really quick, but if anyone has questions, or if you don't have any questions tonight, but you think of something later, yes?
Chuck, just one, and maybe Bob, this is for you, but let's see, 3.7 million fund balance went up. A portion of that was because of the decrease in health care expenditures. Do we know what portion of that 3.7 million the decreased health care contributed to?
1.9 million for the health.
Okay, so then, 1.9 million, we can expect because of the deferred care from '20 that that will go into '21. Do we have a way to, quote, earmark that and plan that 1.9 million for 2021 so we can help mitigate the increase overall?
Yes, it's earmarked right now.
Okay.
Our self-funded health insurance plans will automatically stay in there. And something else we're reminded of is we did pass a deficit budget, budget year we're in the midst of. So that is essentially our way strategically as a whole Board to spend some of that fund balance that's not in the health plan. So the stuff that's not in the health plan, we're under a deficit budget of about $1.2 million dollars, so we're spending some of it, but you're right, some of it is protected inside that self-funded health plan. And we're expecting some of it to come back, and there can be some deferred medical expenses that come our way. But at the same time, we're at least projecting, because it was in our sunblock from last week, health premiums staying the same for one more year. Hopefully, those things, keep our premiums the same, some of it will come back.
Okay, yes, thank you.
So far, we're trying to do pretty well, but some points that could come back, yeah.
See, and I guess that brings up one comment. If you, you are self-insured, so you're kind of, it kind of ebbs and flows with activity, people going to the doctor, whereas if you were insured from a, just say, commercial insurance point of view, you wouldn't have seen that drastic reduction because you would have still been paying for coverage the same amount for each insured person, whether they were going to the doctor or not, okay? Now, self-insurance in your case is generally a very good thing. Now, some years you have worse experience than other years, but overall, it's a positive for just such, this type of situation, you can, you can maybe control costs a little more, you can add in something, some tweaks to the plan that might get you a lesser usage from a, less expensive, let's say, use if someone goes into a walk-in program versus an emergency room, okay? If it can be handled by walk-in, that cost is going to be lessened since you're paying directly the actual cost of it, that would decrease the total cost, and that's just one example, but again, self-insurance in a district your size, in general, makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, we are working on those strategies, but consumerism is a very volatile investment side. Any other questions?
I wasn't trying to ignore you over here, but, okay, so.
All right, it doesn't seem like we have any other questions. So with that, I'm seeking a motion to approve the 2019-2020 audit report as presented.
So move.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Krieger.
Thank you.
Noel, thank you also. Okay, we're on agenda item 8A, referendum update. There is a PowerPoint with survey results. Dr. Hiltz, not sure who you have presenting this tonight?
Sure, excuse me. So tonight, we have Mr. Steve Shonert from Nexus is with us, and Mr. Peter Leatherman. We've heard from Mr. Leatherman a few times, we will hear from him again tonight. If you want to come forward, Peter. Just as a, by way of introduction, the purpose of tonight, what we're hoping is to let you know what we've learned, both through the scientific survey as well as through some anecdotal feedback. We've been engaging with our PTO groups and our principals, and so we want to share that with you tonight, give you some preliminary direction, get some direction from you on how we might proceed, and then we would, obviously, depending on your direction, we would come back with recommendations in the next couple of meetings. So, Mr. Leatherman, thank you for joining us.
Super, it's a pleasure to be in person. This is only the second one I've done this year. It's fantastic to see a human being instead of just looking at faces on a screen. Just to review with the district what we undertook, this time around, we increased the sample size. We pushed it to 500, and the purpose of that, not we get an extra half point in the margin of error. We wanted large enough cell size of those that voted no to understand what their reasons for opposition on the bond referendum and the operating levy were. So the sample was 500, the interviews were completed between November 9th and November 19th. The average interview time was 10 minutes. The non-response rate, interesting, we just have to wait about five days till after presidential or gubernatorial election, and people are willing to talk to us again once they realize we're not going to vote or ID them or anything. So the non-response rate was 4.5%, and like I mentioned, with the 500 sample, the results are projectable to within plus or minus 4.5% with the statistical caveat of audit 90... with the statistical caveat of out of ninety-five out of a hundred cases. So I thought I'd put up the demographics just to show you the makeup of this sample. We had nineteen percent that indicated that they contained a household with a preschooler. Thirty percent contained a child attending the Wausau School District, and sixty-four percent were empty nesters. Now, that empty nester does not connotate age, it just simply connotates the lack, there's no child in the household. So you could have eighteen to thirty-four-year-old, a millennial empty nester. Okay, but so, seven out of ten people have no children attending the Wausau School District. What's the political makeup? What we've seen in the earlier surveys just becomes a little bit more heightened when you get closer to the presidential election, with more people willing to say I'm Republican or Democrat. And that's what we see here. The independents are down, but Republicans outnumber the Democrats by five points in the district. The political ideology, though, is still conservative. Almost a flat majority of people indicate that they're conservative, twenty-six percent moderate, and twenty-three percent liberal. If we continue to the next set of demographics, the age comes in right at about forty-nine-point-five years. These are, they have to be over eighteen to take the survey. We have twenty-two percent that are eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds, while we have eighteen percent that are over sixty-five. Looking at the ethnicity, seventy-nine percent indicated they were Caucasian, five percent African-American, three percent Hispanic-Latino, nine percent Asian Pacific Islander, and then we had approximately five percent indicating that they were multiracial. Thirty-five percent were on the east side of the Wisconsin River, sixty-five percent on the west side. And then the gender, we just always balance, forty-nine, fifty-one. We use the birthday method in order to get men on the phone, because if we just talked to whoever answered the phone, we'd have seventy percent women, because men don't answer the phone. So we just ask to talk to the person whose birthday is closest to the date we're calling. So before I go into what the survey says, any questions on methodology or demographics? All right, I'm going to start out at a high level and go back to when I presented the survey results to you in the summer, with the package that went to the public in November. And at that point in time, we talked about what you're looking for on Election Day is for folks to walk into the voting booth and make a simple cost-benefit analysis. How much does this cost, and what are we getting for the school district? And not bring in any additional baggage, okay? And there were some caveats in that discussion also about the communication starting early before the mess of the presidential election happened, and not having any major issues come up in the district. And you had a major issue, obviously, come up with how the schools open. And that actually added into that atmospheric of, you know, the baggage people brought into the election booth, where it became a symbolic no, not necessarily looking at the package itself. And to put this in perspective, some general questions. The job performance of the school board, and we have, I was here, I think, almost a year ago to the date presenting to the school board. The board at that time started out with seventy-six percent approval to fourteen percent disapproval. It's very, very strong, as we talked about. You know, at that point, the norm across the Midwest is about two to one favorable to unfavorable. And then this spring and summer, when we talked, the, with the pandemic and everything that's happened, the rating, the favorable went down, the unfavorable stayed about the same, but we saw this doubling of the unsure, of a lot of the questions about what was happening and going to happen in the fall. After the election, we can see the favorable did go up five points to sixty-seven percent, but the unfavorable went now to twenty-eight percent. The unsure moved into an unfavorable position. Now, comparatively, this is still a strong rating, okay? With everything that's happened this school year across Minnesota and Wisconsin and all our polls, school boards now are about one-point-five to one, about fifty-five, forty in rating. So you still have a strong rating. It's just you've had a doubling of the unfavorable rating from where we were when everything was wonderful last December. The similar thing we see with the superintendent and the administration. We see the same exact thing, the bump up in the uncertainty in the spring and summer to twenty-two percent, and then the bump up unfavorable, but then the greater bump up in the unfavorable. So this is just on the edges, and where it impacts the most is with households containing children, okay? And that's the basis of any successful operating levy or bond referendum. If we look at the financial management, we started out at seventy-five percent favorable to twenty-one percent unfavorable. This spring and summer, it was at sixty-eight, twenty-five, and now we're at sixty-one, thirty-three. Once again, historically, going back over the year, there's a shift more to the only fair category out of the good. The excellent's been about one out of ten people indicating excellent. The variation is between the good and only fair. Now, still, the concern is the historic increase, it's not the comparative, the comparative. The comparative here, when I was here last winter, it was about fifty percent favorable. We're now at forty-four percent favorable across Minnesota and Wisconsin as we look at the financial management. People are really looking at what's going on in school districts. It's like this huge spotlight that's happened. This, though, is kind of the foundational concern. And this has to do so much with distance learning and the learning models. There is a concern, and you see it nationwide when people are talking, and you see it down in this district. The shift in the quality of education being provided by the schools. When I was here last December, you were at ninety-four percent favorable to six percent only fair or poor. And that thirty-seven percent, those are, I talked about them then, those are the enthusiasts in the quality of education. It's about double the norm that we see. Then we saw the dip down, but still, ninety percent favorable, eight percent unfavorable in the spring and fall. In the late spring, early summer, people were still giving the benefit of the doubt to the school districts. The distance learning was kind of, you know, it was thrust upon them, and people still had good feelings. And it kind of outweighed the concern on the academic rigor and the quality of education being provided. And now we're seeing in district after district, this shift. They haven't gone to poor, you can see the bump up into the only fair category. You've had people going from good to only fair, and you can see the excellent rating is now twenty points lower. You're not abnormal on this, okay? The excellent rating in the last three months of polling that we've done is eight percent of what's being provided. And there's no difference between its apparent who chose distance learning, a school district that's in a hybrid model, or some sort of full in-person. There's just something going on that it's not, folks are really concerned about the quality. And similarly, the parents mirror the shift also. The other factor that came into play, and the big issue, obviously, that you're all aware of, was the decision on opening schools this fall. What folks wanted and told us, and parents basically mirrored the community, twenty-three percent of the district wanted to be full in-person, forty-two percent wanted a hybrid model, and thirty percent wanted full distance learning. It almost seems, it doesn't matter what school or district we're doing, it's almost like the constant of pi. Every district has twenty to twenty-five percent that want their kids in school every day, all day. Twenty-five to thirty percent want full distance learning, and the rest are someplace in the middle. But what happened in the shift to go full distance at the start, you can see you had sixty-five percent of the community as a whole, and you had seventy percent of parents that wanted some sort of either full in-person or hybrid model that they couldn't get, and that caused a major issue. Now, moving to the election itself, and the communication, you know, I understand started late, and then, once you started late, it was difficult to get out in all the clutter that overtook and consumed the entire country. On Election Day, fifteen percent of people had no idea that there was a bond referendum or an operating levy on the ballot. Eighty-five percent were aware. If we go to the next slide, did they vote on the school questions? Now, from looking at your data, there was an undervote, meaning that you had more people vote for the president than on the school district bond and operating levy. That's not unusual. A lot of people just go in and they're just voting for president. There's always an undervote. But seventy-two percent of the sample indicated that they had voted for or against the bond referendum or the operating levy. Now, what were the reasons for not voting? You had twenty-eight percent indicate that they had no children, so it just wasn't a key issue for them. You had fifteen, or twenty-one percent say no time or they were busy, fifteen percent not interested. Eighteen percent said they were either too old, we put in the COVID concern also on this question. You had five percent that thought it would pass, seven percent didn't have enough information, and six percent forgot. If we look now at the voters, how did, and we asked the seventy-two percent that voted, how they voted. It's actually pretty darn close, easily within the plus or minus four and a half percent of what the actual numbers were. You had forty-six percent indicate that they support the bond, and you had forty-nine percent indicate that they supported the operating levy. So now we followed up with the opposition. And when we do this, we always start out with an open-ended, so they can tell us whatever they want. We haven't, you know, poisoned the well and given them, you know, taxes or talked about anything. Tell us what is the primary reason for opposing, and then we class them down into categories. First off, twenty-nine percent were convinced that they would get lower taxes if it failed. It's not uncommon when you have a zero increase on an operating levy or a bond, the expectation for opponents is that there will be a tax decrease if it fails. You had twenty-two percent that just said the price tag on the bond was too high. But if we combine, I'm going to put the pandemic for opponents, comes in at thirty-two percent. And they separate out into three pieces, two primary. Eighteen percent said our facilities aren't even being used. Why are we bothering to vote on fixing the facilities? You had eleven percent that just said this is a bad timing during the pandemic. And you had four, three percent indicating specialists aren't needed during the pandemic. Really, what it became is a focus on the short term, what was happening in the immediate school year versus five, ten, fifteen years out, okay? Then, after we asked the open-ended, and they can tell us whatever they want to, we went through a list. And we said, is this a major factor for opposing the referendums? A minor factor or not a factor at all? What's arrayed on there are the major and minor factors. What's not on there, so if it doesn't add, so at the top, these were statements. And I'm just, I put them into a few words to try to capture the essence of the statement. It's not the time during a pandemic. Eighty-nine percent of opponents indicated that that was at least a factor for opposing. Sixty-five percent, though, said it was a major factor, okay? Two-thirds. Sixty-four percent said that there was no compelling need stated. And interestingly, when we look at the data, and you'll see the chart a little bit later, on the level of information, how informed people felt, the lower informed they were, the more likely they were to indicate that there was no compelling need. So there really was a link between the communication, the information level, and the need. And that goes back to what I started out talking about. On Election Day, people going in and making the cost benefit, you have to understand that there's a need, and it's not a want, in order to go into the calculation on what it costs and what we're getting. Now, those are the two primary for opponents. And now, keeping in mind that folks could say all of these were a major factor. And essentially, you have six factors that go over sixty percent of an impact. The next three are at about fifty percent as a major factor, about seventy percent as at least a factor somewhat. The back-to-school planning this fall. Forty-nine percent said it was a major factor, seventy percent said it was a factor. Going, tying to the no compelling need, the no negative consequences. If nothing's going to happen negative, if this fails, it's counterintuitive to people that it goes from a want to a need if they don't understand what the negative consequences are. Forty-eight percent indicated it was a major factor, seventy-one percent a factor. And then their taxes are already too high, those that are looking for the tax relief, shall we say. Forty-eight percent major factor, sixty-eight percent somewhat of a factor. Then we go down to, there was, there's no need for specialists at this time. Kids aren't in school, more of the short-term look than the long-term. And then we go down, the remaining, you have somewhere between twenty-four and a quarter and a third of people saying it's a major factor. And the total impact is somewhere between a third to forty, forty-five percent. But it almost becomes, I call this the death of a thousand cuts, okay? Every little one was a notch. And you had, looking back amongst the opponents, it was about fifteen percent of opponents said all of these were major factors from creating the mega school, the teachers' union not endorsing, they wanted the tax decrease, they don't trust the spending, not enough information. The real key takeaway, though, from this is, in order to fix this, in spite of everything, you just barely lost. It was that close on the bond and especially the operating levy. If we go to the next chart, of everything we've talked about, is there one change that if the district made would get you to consider voting in favor? First off, seventy-seven percent said no. Those are the, those are the opponents. And that's actually, though, when you look at it, if you had about fifty to fifty-five opponents, that means twenty percent are saying that, yes, I would consider. So that drops the opposition down at forty, forty-five percent to start with. The thing is, is there's no silver bullet. There's not one thing that people say fix this. It's you had six percent saying take out the mega school, four percent lower the amount for the bond, three percent weight for the pandemic, three percent more for the classroom education, two percent just do better distance learning, and two percent scattered. So there's enough movement because you've lost closely, that it's something to consider going back and just fixing things, not going back with the same package, but going back and asking the community again with a different package. Potentially, it needs to be changed, you can't just go back out there. We had one school district years ago that just said, oh, well, this was the right package, let's do it again. And it went from forty-five percent support to twenty-five percent support. I mean, that just doesn't fly. The community starts saying, we said no, now we're going to say heck no. And so, but this shows that there is a willingness out there still. Looking at the information sources, first off, we asked, did you get any information from that source? And if you did, was it very credible, somewhat credible or not credible? First off, it's good that the district mailings was the highest. You had seventy-three percent indicate that they got information, and sixty-three percent of them said it was credible. The troubling part is the next one. The second most relied on source of information was the grapevine. And interestingly enough, it had more credibility than the district mailings. The grapevine is alive and lush in Wausau, I'm sure you're all aware, as elected officials, and it has a high level of credibility. Local TV news comes in, then the district website, district emails at about forty percent each. Facebook, start to see the polarization on social media, where you have nine percent saying it's very credible, eight percent not credible at all. The Vote Yes Committee, we'll talk a little bit more about that. It was very limited impact, and it just splits the community on whether it was credible. And then for some reason, the billboard, you had thirty-four percent indicate that they saw it, but you had five percent saying it was very credible, and eleven percent not credible. Not sure what was on the billboard. If we looking at, we asked folks then, had they heard from any organized groups? Vote no, or organized groups in favor of or opposed to the referendum? Eighty-four percent indicated they heard from no one. The reach of the Vote Yes was thirteen percent. Eight percent said both, five percent said a group in favor, and ten percent vote no. Two percent said just an opposed group, eight percent said both. So really, it was very limited impact, and it actually nets out a wash between those that heard from a vote no group and those that heard from a vote yes group. I talked about this one earlier. I talked about this one earlier. How informed did folks feel about the referendums? Only sixty-five percent said that they were somewhat informed. Only one in five people said they were very informed. And part of that is, we talked about the challenge of the communication effort and to get the information out in windows where people, it would cut through the clutter. Keeping in mind that seventy-two percent of people voted, you had thirty-five percent of people indicated that they weren't informed. So you had about ten percent of the electorate voting, and almost a one-for-one. If they said not too informed, they voted What could the district have done better to inform residents? Fifty-eight percent said nothing. And keep in mind, you had about two-thirds of people saying somewhat informed or very informed. Nineteen percent wanted precise budget details. These folks wanted to sit with Keith and Bob and the, and the school board chair, have coffee and go over line by line. I mean, it's kind of insatiable. Most districts have ten percent, you're at nineteen percent that really want to look at the books, how this is all gonna be spent. Eight percent just wanted to understand what the need was. And that went back to what was number one, the lack, the no compelling need. And seven percent differentiate between the budget details and just understanding the general uses for money. So those, you know, those three, about a third of the community are looking at the information, whether just specific on uses, general on uses, or making folks understand what the need is. When did folks make their decision on how they were gonna vote? First off, and this is sad, I've been doing this twenty-five years, and this, this number continues to grow and grow. You had forty-five percent of people that had their mind made up before you even made a decision. It goes back to they're predisposed. They're gonna vote against anything or they're for anything. Doesn't matter if it's an operating levy or bond, it doesn't matter if it's ten dollars a month or ten dollars a year, they're just opposed. So you only have at the outset fifty-five percent of people that are gonna look at the information. If we look, though, then, it took, put the before Labor Day and the Sept- September figure in play, you had two-thirds of the community that had their mind made up before October first. You were only operating on the edges of the communication and the effort by the vote yes with about one in five people. Couple more global questions then, looking generally in the district. This is statistically significantly changed. When I was here a year ago, we asked folks, do we think, did they think that the Wausau School District was adequately funded? Seventy-seven percent said yes, they thought it was then. Now, fifty-three percent. So there has been a decrease twenty-four percent, with those saying no doubling from nineteen to forty percent. But still, keep in mind, as you think about additional operating fund requests, you still have a majority of people indicating that they think you're adequately funded. You also have optimism out there. If we ask people to think about the budget outlook, do they think it's gonna get better, worse, or stay about the same? Well, the largest piece of the pie is forty-one percent indicating about the same. You had thirty-two percent indicate that it was gonna get better, with seventeen percent saying it was gonna get worse. So the, the, the hope in the district is tilted about two to one saying, with people saying it's gonna get better than worse. You could see, though, it's a soft, it's soft and a little bit better or a little bit worse. Only two percent in each category indicate that it's either gonna get much better or much worse. If we look at some specific school district perceptions, and these are kind of the bedrocks of the district, just to see, has there been statistically significant change here? And this, this makes me feel good as a pollster, where everything we've talked about, those, those blips, well, not the blip, the blip of twenty-twenty, shall we say, and everything that's happened. The, the bedrock, though, questions are still comparatively strong historically and comparatively strong with recent data. The first question is, does the school district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? When we started out, we had seventy-eight percent indicate yes, eighteen percent said no. We're at sixty-six percent saying yes now, twenty-four percent saying no. You can see uncertainties doubled from five to ten percent. You still, it's statistically significant, but it's only a six-point increase in disagreement in one year from December of twenty-nineteen to, to, November of twenty-nineteen. The norm on this, when I was here last December, is roughly about fifty-four percent. Norm on this right now is forty-nine percent over the, over twenty, I'm just giving you twenty-twenty norms. And so, that has decreased. So comparatively strong. The schools are a good investment, and I would support a property tax increase for that investment. When we started, we had sixty-five percent saying yes and twenty-two percent saying no. In the spring, it was fifty-seven percent yes, one percent increase on no. And after everything that's happened, it's a six-point increase, it's statistically significant, but you still only have twenty-nine percent disagreeing with that statement. You still have fifty-seven percent indicating yes. Do you consider a tax increase as a last resort? Basically unchanged statistically, started at sixty-five, twenty-five, it's at sixty, thirty. Three new questions. And these kind of play in with everything that's happened this fall with schools. Do they trust the district to do what's right for children? Set, we, we don't have any baseline, we didn't ask this in twenty-nineteen. Seventy-nine percent indicated, yes, they do. Twelve percent indicated no, and eight percent were unsure. The historic norm on this with districts is ninety-five percent saying yes. Okay, we're at eighty percent right now for twenty-twenty is the norm. So you're, you're at the norm. You have twelve percent, one in eighth, though, indicating no. And following it up, it all has to do with, should the kids be in school and what happened this fall? Is a district honest about spending? Yes, considers almost going back to those previous two slides on spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently. It's about twenty, twenty-five percent of folks indicating no, and that's well within the norm. And then the decision-making. This, th- this varies all over the place depending on what issues going on in a district. We didn't do, asked this in twenty-nineteen, but currently sixty-seven percent are satisfied with the decision-making, twenty-one percent said no, and thirteen percent were unsure. The twenty-twenty norm on this is seventy-five percent. So it is below the norm of satisfaction with the decision-making. And a lot of people, once again, talked about the school, school opening this fall. And then finally, we asked a question, would they support a tax increase to provide additional funding? When we asked this last December, I believe we had about thirty percent indicate nothing. That's up to forty-one percent indicating nothing now. So the appetite for a tax increase has, i- is not growing whatsoever. You know, keeping in mind that the bond and the operating levy were zero, were net, zero tax increases, that's much more appealing at this point in time. And this obviously ties in with all the economic situation going on across the district and across the state and the country. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I have a, not really a question, but a comment. Of the people that voted no, forty-four percent were impacted by the belief that a yes vote would be boundary changes. And forty-seven percent of them were impacted by the belief that the combined elementary school would result in larger class sizes. And that's really disappointing because neither of those things are true. And, and we had, we had some people out there intentionally spreading misinformation about the combined elementary schools and specifically saying it was going to increase class sizes when it wasn't. But I imagine we also had a lot of people out there who just, just assumed that a bigger school would mean bigger class sizes. Nobody told them that, they just, just kinda sounds like it makes sense. So I, I think those are a couple of points that we can really look at ourselves as not, you know, not getting the information out there enough when we've got people relying on things that aren't true. It's one thing if people are relying on things they just don't agree with. But it's really frustrating to find out how many people relied on things that just, just plain not true. It's just, we didn't do a good enough job of, of getting that truth out.
And that was the impact of the grapevine also.
Right.
Yeah. And if I could follow up along those lines, I mentioned earlier, we've been following up with our principals and our PTOs. And, and one of the, the strongest messages was they didn't understand what was in the referendum. Now that we're talking to them, the general tenor is quite positive, but, but you're right, the message just didn't get out.
So when, when we look at the twenty-four slides, dozens of bar graphs and pie charts, can you synthesize this down into what are the top three action items that we should be considering, administration should be considering, if we go forward with a spring
I think the first takeaway to, from it should be, in light of everything that happened, and I mentioned this earlier, it was close. This isn't go back to the drawing board and start all over again. You knew it was going to be difficult in the middle of a presidential year. It became doubly difficult with the pandemic and everything else that's happened. And so, moving forward, I think a key t, a, a key takeaway is, you know, to look at the, the mega school, just, that's, that's what we tested, I don't know if it is a mega school or not, in, in that sense. Consider the pros and cons, realizing that you, you don't have to have a hundred percent of people agree and vote yes, you need fifty percent plus one, and how to put that coalition together. The coalition is there to put together. I would say that you, going back to, you have to improve, the, the vote yes and the communication efforts have to improve and, and get out there. It'll be much easier because you won't be trying to fight through all the clutter. A decision, you know, of, it'll be, you know, if it's April, November, in and off year, it's easier to get that message through. I think another key takeaway is no major issues outside of what's happening in the referendum and the levy. You don't need seismic activity to give folks another option or another reason to go in and vote no symbolically. And you had enough people, when seventy percent of people are specifically indicating the, the decision in the fall, you know, i- i- it's critical to just have calmness for three months during the campaign, let the communication do its work, let the vote yes group do its work, and bring parents back into the fold to feel good about the future. I think it's gonna be really important, and, you know, people ask me now, you know, I s, I think I see a light at the end of the tunnel, and I don't think it's a train anymore for twenty-twenty, well, well, no, for twenty-twenty-one. And so, with that being the case and moving forward, I mean, you saw about a third of the opponents are fixated understandably on the pandemic and the short term. Okay, we didn't need specialists. And I think is to try to get people to think about the future. And I think a discussion, if, you know, knock on wood, the vaccine rolls out and everything like that, you can start getting people to, to think forward. Okay? And, and, and not, you, you, I mean, school districts have been, you know, one superintendent said he's been playing whack-a-mole for the last nine months. And the, the, the ability to try to have any sort of long-term vision. So I think that's a critical piece moving forward, is to get people to focus on not where we're at, this, this, this two shall pass, but where we wanna be. And to get, and you, you do have to get the, to understand the need and the neg, the negative consequences. What happens if we don't do this is a critical piece also.
Thank you.
I don't think that was two or three, but I.
Yeah. Thank you.
And just to note, we can't go in November. If we don't go this April, it would be a year again in April. Statutory, that's our limit. This April is our, is the, next year, we can do two questions in a year. And, and so, this next April would be our, our two questions for the year.
And it's gonna be a totally different electorate. I mean, i- it's really an education-focused ballot, because all we have here is school board, state superintendent, if we have referendum questions, and I think a judicial, yeah. So it, it's not like people going to vote for president and not being informed about the referendum.
I, I mean, an off-year election, either April, November, what have you, i- it's just, it's much different for the vote yes. It, and, and the school, the school district, it's always just about informing. But the communication and discussion, it, it's a get-out-the-vote effort as opposed to a communication effort. I mean, I mean, heck, you had eighty percent of people vote and seventy-two percent voted on these elections, you didn't have to worry about people voting, you needed them to be informed. And, and that's, that's a whole different animal. With the, the, the timing, a year ago, who'd have ever thought it'd be standing here, you know?
I think the message will get out so much clearer for April. I mean, it was just buried with all the other elections that we had. I mean, these district mailings, I don't even think that I ever got one, quite frankly.
And if you did, it was in a stack of mailings this high that, you know.
Yeah, that was, in talking, you know, that, that late August, first part of September, and then the flood came on for all the communication. That, that was the true window school districts had in order to try to get the information out there.
I'll just add a little bit of context, and from the conversations that we've been having with the, the PTOs, and we still have a few yet, but themes are developing. I've already mentioned that people didn't feel informed. They, there was a lot of anger about, you know, the start of school, we're hearing that anecdotally as well. I mentioned earlier too, that there, there is a strong reaction to the merging of the schools or changing boundaries. People are telling us, you know, if, if you want to pose something that might pass, don't close any schools and don't change any boundaries. That's a strong message that's coming through. And that's not just from a Lincoln or Grant, that was from, I think, from all the PTOs that we've been speaking to. And then I think I may have shared this already, but as we have conversations, you know, half hour to an hour with, you know, six to ten, twelve people, and they're able to ask their questions, they're very engaged in it. Of course, these tend to be, you know, engaged people, they're in the PTO. But they are saying that they, they are supportive. It's, nothing's unanimous, right? But they are supportive of the, of the, of the project if it doesn't include those, those controversial items. They think it's a, a good investment, you know, taking care of the buildings, the environmental learning center, the pupil services teams, all those components are, are getting positive anecdotal feedback. Some of them have come out and said they would support a, a new proposal. But again, not, not universal, but those are the kind of the themes. And it's very consistent with what, with what Mr. Levin's found.
So if, if you think about the strategic packaging of what the message could be, I mean, the hundred and fifty-six million was a net even for tax impact, right? So in theory, if you look at and say, okay, just throwing it out there, no mega school, you decrease it by forty million dollars, we could actually still improve the district substantially and also offer a tax decrease, at least for our portion of the bill. Am I thinking about that correctly?
Sure. The tax impact was a slight decrease even in the, in the, yeah, we're talking about the mega school part of that.
We shouldn't if we're planning on adding that to the, to a future referendum.
If you get a mic, so they can hear, so people at home can hear you. Yep. It should be live. It was a tax decrease technically, it was the, the. Uh, was a tax decrease technically, it was the, uh. I don't let you do that part, okay, for the feedback. If we took the $155 million of borrowing and layered on $3 million of operational referendum question, that was still less than what we're paying right now in the defeason strategy, right? The defeason strategy was about $14 million. So it's already, it was already a little bit lower. The strategy you're talking about, we had about $26 million that we were carrying for a new grant. You're right, remove that, but we'd still have an obligation to maintain grant and that would cost probably $10 million. We also, uh, had a lot of those John Muir students going over to Horace Mann in the original budget. So we might have a little bit more in costs for Horace Mann. Nowhere do we have in there, uh, repurposed Montessori. That doesn't live anywhere if we just fix up Lincoln. So if you fix up Lincoln, you could still have maybe five or six million dollars there, but you don't have a home for Montessori. So there are some things that you give and take, but we do think we could bring in a referendum question with a bond that's less than the one that we originally had. We're also talking about, and this is a big part of the strategy that could have even been addressed before November. You start up, updating and addressing technology and life safety systems and PA and some of those things that are short-term assets. Sometimes people are critical of borrowing 20-year money to use it for a five-year asset. So we could also exchange bond for operational money. So perhaps instead of a $155 million bond, you could talk about a $145 million bond. And then instead of a $3 million operational referendum, maybe a three and a half million dollar operational referendum. With a half million dollars going towards continuously updating technology, continuously updating some heating and cooling systems and things of that nature. And sometimes that will get people in favor of it because sometimes people don't like borrowing 20-year money to pay for interactive TVs or life safety systems and upgrades and, uh, mass communication, things like that. So hopefully that answers some of your.
When I look at the data, it says, yes, we would support something, we need to understand it better, but we would also like to see some tax decrease, which it makes, I mean, it's common sense, right? So I think if we can offer a package that gives that, it looks like it has a fairly substantial chance of passing.
Yeah, if I could speak to that just a little bit, um, did you want anything else about the, the, uh, finance piece? I just want to talk about the communication piece a little bit. We, we can certainly come back. What we've been hearing again, um, and we heard a little bit of it here and hear a little bit from the PTOs is, um, they, they, if they, if they could sit through that long video that we sent out, they liked it, but it was really long. They're looking for shorter, I, I think last week's or last meeting, one of you used, you know, like a real clean kind of a message. It can't be very convoluted. So if we send out, uh, we, I've been talking to, um, Mrs. White about some strategic communication. It would be more frequent and much shorter and very targeted. People didn't understand, don't understand what pupil services really are or why we need them, right? They didn't understand what deferred maintenance was and why weren't we keeping up with it? Uh, questions like that. Uh, we also have talked about, um, you know, having specific messages for specific schools, right? Everybody gets a little bit different project and, and because they heard about something over at this school, they didn't know if they got, it was just very kind of cloudy. So we need to really refine that message and, and target it to specific schools as well. So that's the, and, and obviously working more through the PTOs, you know, more of a grassroots communication, listening to what they're telling us and let them share the story. We think is also a, a, a good method.
Well, on that, um, what about this vote yes committee? So there were yard signs, I really didn't see any except in my own yard supporting it. Is, is that something that we can work with the PTOs, finding some people that are designated with each PTO that might serve on that committee or, um, try to, and it goes to the grassroots, but, you know, maybe they're helping push things out on social media as well. But I think if we really can tap into those individuals, that would help get the message out significantly more too.
I think that's a possibility, yeah. And again, in our conversations, that's the kind of vibe we're getting. Um, and of course, we're not offering at this point because we don't even know if the board wants to go to a referendum. So we want to be careful about that too, but yes, I, I think you're, you're right.
Could, if I could just add one thing, uh, following up on the superintendent's point. When you have a, a number over $100 million, and the first one we worked on was 1998, a school district finally went over $100 million and we thought, oh my goodness. And then we hit 250 and in 2019, we did a district over Minnesota that was at $326 million. That number is ethereal to folks, okay? Sounds like a lot. What matters is how much it costs them and we know what the cost is, zero. But then you have to bring it down to what's happening, especially for parents, when you're forming a coalition for vote yes of what's happening in their kid's school. So yes, the number might be, you know, my school district in 2017, we got through a $250 million, it's the largest district in the state. And everybody thought a quarter of a billion dollars. But every parent who walked in, and this is the unfortunate challenge you had this fall, when they walked in for conferences, here was this display of what's happening in this school. So yes, it's $250 million across the district, but this is my kid's school. You have to bring it down to that level so people understand the details because it can easily get lost in that number.
I like the idea of pulling some of what sounds more of a maintenance type of ongoing expense out of the bond building referendum. I think it makes it much easier to explain. If you have a bond, a building referendum, it's actually just all buildings and you can say, here, this is being built, this is being built, this is being built. It's very different than the PA systems are failing at this school and they need to be replaced and the, you know, the communication system, the, you know, whatever it is that controls the HVAC at this school. To be able to separate them out, I think, would make it easier to explain. I think it reduces some of that sticker shock price on the bond, so I like that as well. I wouldn't call it technology. When you say technology, that immediately makes me think of tablets, devices. I don't think that's a good way to get it passed, but, um, we also have the, the powerful example we can use of how the system failed at West because we didn't get to it in time. And so we don't want that to happen in other schools and so, and that's really different than building, you know, building new classrooms or building a new addition or, you know, adding air conditioning to a school that doesn't have it, that seems like it's a whole different thing. And so I like that idea.
Quickly on that point, we passed a resolution a couple of weeks ago with the life safety system at Los Angeles, that's a half million dollars. So if you did create a referendum question that was three and a half million operational instead of three, that half million dollars that one year just did that. The benefit of doing a large bond, you really can catch up. So how we feather that in at the beginning would be the difficult, uh, part. What's the most important first half million dollars? If I pick the half million dollar number, what's the next most important half million dollars and then the next most? And you would have somebody that would have to wait for four years before you address their half million dollar concern, whereas a, a bond referendum can do it all at once. Now, as long as there have been building bonds, you spend some of that money on a short-term asset. It's just the nature of it. Even if you build a brand-new building, you're putting some furnishings and you're putting some technology into that building, that's going to be a short-term asset. It kind of comes along with the way school finances set up. So you can defend some of that, it's not indefensible. You, you borrow $100 million to build a brand-new school and some of it's going to be a five-year asset. And you try to defend it by saying, the first bond payment is for the short-term asset, that's the next one. So it's, it's a, you have to manage the two.
Right.
By the way, if you have any, uh, deeper questions, it's interesting to talk to Mr. Levin because he can actually cross-categorically analyze. And you kind of referenced it a little bit earlier, you know, how, you know, not just who, that, that 41, for instance, I'm looking, I'm, I'm looking at a different slide, but when it said 41% said nothing, Peter can tell you who that was that said that. So he can, he can really kind of cross-analyze, it's very interesting to, to have that conversation. I appreciate your insights.
I think, I think one of the things that we're fighting is we have for several years now been, being told that it's great to have a businessman run government entities because they know how to run a business. And there's a misunderstanding about how public works, work and how a business works. And I think people get this notion that we shouldn't have to borrow these big sums. Somehow we should save for this money like a corporation or a family would, would, but there's no vehicle to do that. And I don't know how to back that up and get to what the real differences are.
I could maybe offer some insight there and some talking points that you could use. Uh, first of all, the state legislature has made it pretty clear over the years that they want capital improvements, the school districts to be local decisions. They want the local people to make these decisions on big buildings and capital improvements. So that's part of it. So the operational money that we're given each year has never been intended to build new buildings. It's intended to fund operations. So, so that's number one. Another one, a lot of people say you should be saving for at least a down payment, you should be saving for a building, you should be saving for some of these expenses that come along. People don't like when you tax to put it into your savings account. In fact, we might hear about the fund balance that went up this year. So my taxes are this, so your fund balance could have grown by $3 million. People don't like to tax in order to save, 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 to make a down payment like you would as a homeowner or a business owner. So those are a couple of talking points that you can use, uh, to maybe defeat that argument, so to speak. We've had a little experience with that in these, some of these PTO meetings, um, and people do respond to that. You know, it's, it's, uh, it's nice when you can compare it to a, a home mortgage and how they're different.
If we can break it down further, general problem, then I, I try to explain it this way. When you have a home and you're trying to maintain your home, there are certain things that you can fund out of your checking account. You write a check or you debit and it's small items. Certain other items that are a little bit bigger, you fund out of your savings. And for roofs and for HVACs or for furnace replacements and big-ticket items, most of the time you're going for a loan, home equity line of credit or a, a, a loan to do that. And if we can put it into those kind of, of buckets for them so they can understand how you would go ahead and how the district is really kind of forced to do that. With a million-dollar budget for repairs across the district to maintain 18 schools, you can't even do a high school roof in a, in a, in a year for that. So those are the kind of things that are talking points that you can use to help explain away.
I think it also helps to explain the funding that we do receive and how it hasn't kept up with inflation. To take away this notion that maybe we haven't done a good job with the funding we receive, explain that every single year we lose money. Because every single year we're receiving, you know, maybe it's not every single year, but if you look at a trend over the last decade or more, it's, we get less funding each year when you, when you include inflation in on that. So when I tell that to people, it, it helps them understand why we can't just replace our PA systems or add in air conditioning or do these things because we don't even get enough to keep up with just our normal day-to-day operations.
One of the, uh, largest opposition groups was the one about the mega school operation. And there was some reference in the notes about discussions that were going on and the city considering, uh, putting it in as a historical site. Can you say more about that?
Sure, uh, so a few weeks ago, a month ago, we attended the, uh, what was the name of that committee, Bob?
Historical presentation committee?
Yeah, thank you, yep. And, um, you know, at that point, we just wanted to hear their position. And so we, uh, attended, um, they made a, a lot of really truly wonderful statements about, about Grant Elementary School, right? You know, and its history and, and, um, so tomorrow, actually, there is another meeting, uh, which one is it, Bob?
Planning Commission.
Thank you, Planning Commission. So we're going to try, at least one of us to try to get to that again to kind of learn. Frankly, I wouldn't mind if, if people on this body have an opinion, um, uh, so, there's a few questions. You know, one, we shared with you that, that the overarching theme is, um, please don't close schools and don't change enrollment boundaries. Is this body willing to go forward with a proposal that doesn't do that? And then if so, then Grant would remain open as it is. Longfellow is already a historic building, so what that means to us is we understand it, we want to clarify, but as we understand it, it means we have to get permission to change, uh, to make changes on the outside of the building. And so we're not necessarily opposed to that, frankly, um, it's kind of a feel-good story. You know, when you talk about, you know, the, this, this group wants to preserve this history and, and if we're keeping Grant, then maybe that becomes another partner for us, frankly. So we're not sure, but that's kind of where our mind is at now, but I'd welcome any feedback on those thoughts.
My opinion is the same as when we talked about last time, which is that, um, I do think we have too many buildings. I think it's, I think it's one of the reasons we struggle with our budget. I think it's one of the reasons why we're more expensive than the districts that we're often compared to. But I don't think that this would be the time to try to close a building because, because of the limited nature of, um, what we can communicate and how we can communicate because of the pandemic and the limited timeframe we have between now and April. I don't think we could get enough information out to explain why it would be a good thing. I don't think we have enough time to do it, I don't think we can have the types of community meetings that we would need to, to do to, to decide which building it is or which schools it is and, and to explain why it's a good thing. So I think it's a good thing, you know, you'd, you'd convince me, but, um, I don't think, I don't think we could have a successful referendum in April with that as part of it.
My concern would be the proposal, what, what you would bring, then would we not be putting any money into Grant, for instance? Right, okay, because I don't, I wouldn't support, um.
No, I'm sorry, I was, I was shaking my head, I was, I was listening to what you're saying, but we would propose to make some improvements to Grant and to Lincoln. You know, again, I, I, I agree with, with Lance, I, I don't think we could educate people enough to, to make any kind of a, uh, you know, really a structural change to the district by April. At the same time, I, I don't know when that might have, if it will happen, right? The, we've, we're getting very strong messages about the value of our, of these neighborhood schools. People have really, um, they, they really have ownership over that idea. That means we'll have children attending and staff working in, you know, these buildings and I think we would want to, you know, do the air conditioning. I think we would want to do those upgrades. So we, we would, uh, propose, uh, again, that would be up to the board. Our proposal would probably be to invest in those buildings, um, and then we would look to some, for some direction.
Yeah, I guess, um, certainly we want our, our students and staff to be comfortable in those buildings. My concern would be, are we just going to continue to have future referendums then to, for, for maintenance and for upkeep? My other concern is Montessori, whatever proposal you might bring, I guess, if we're getting ahead of ourselves, we should address, if we want administration to. I'm, I'm getting a sense that, um, it's looking positive for something for April. But one of my concerns would be Montessori and the space for them.
Agreed. And right now, we, we, we've been doing a little bit of preliminary research, there are really no good, uh, options at this point. But again.
Part of that too is connected to, that was connected to John Muir students transferring to Horace Mann, taking that space.
Agreed.
Sort of necessitating Montessori needing to move elsewhere and also making it easier to justify it. As opposed to, it'd be hard to sell building a new, building new space if there's open space that isn't going to get backfilled, I guess.
But they don't have enough space. They want to extend through eighth grade, they don't have the space and current, their current setup, um, you know, some are on one floor, some are, some of the grades are on another. That's totally contrary to the Montessori setup. So by leaving them at Horace Mann, a place where they were always supposed to just be temporary, they're not able to accomplish these two main goals.
If I could, I know there was a meeting and I'm, I'll, I'll ask Steve, I don't know if you've been aware, do you know, I know they had a conversation with Montessori, uh, prin- you've been aware. Do you know, I know they had a conversation with Montessori principal or staff. Do you know, is there some plan to, to try to meet some of the Montessori needs?
Here, it's a sticky one.
Yeah.
You've got overcapacity and what it's locked in, yeah, east, right? And if you're not going to address the west to east balancing issue, you're going to have.
Oh, yeah, Steve, could you?
Okay. Can you hear me? You better? Okay. If you're not going to address the east-west issue in balancing, you're still going to have overcapacity. And to Lance's point about you're going to go and invest someplace else, Montessori would love to have their own facility. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it. They could get additional space at east or at, at Horace Mann currently under this, but they're not happy because there's, there's no gym, there's no separate cafeteria. So long-term, it's not the most ideal spot for them, but it fits the bill right now. Lincoln would not be proposed based on the refer, or the, the past referendum and the feedback we got. Lincoln would be, would be upgraded and refreshed for the current local school, as would, the proposal would be to do the same thing at Grant. But then you're going, you, you have overcrowding at Muir, and you have overcrowding at West. So to address that, you have to add additional space. So the money is that maybe you would lose from having a twenty-seven million dollar grant, and now you're going to say, put twelve million into Grant. That creates a gap, right? A fifteen million, but that's going to be eaten up by, more than likely going to be eaten up by additional space at Muir and at West. There's just, is no appetite in the community to address the west to east boundary and the balancing. They don't want to bus. They don't want to have to drive by one school to get to another if they're in this area. So it's really a tough, tough situation. But Tricia asked, answer your question. They want their own space. Bob's been looking for facility. There's not a, a ample facility available right now to be able to buy, and then you're going to have to refurbish, refurbish that for Montessori. We can get them a little bit more space at Ma'am going forward to continue for their expansion, but ultimately, it's not what they're, they're looking for.
Did that answer?
Thank you.
So Dr. Hiltz, what you need from us is to know whether there's board support and what you would be furthering would be some kind of proposal that doesn't close a school and doesn't change boundaries?
Correct.
That's where we're at.
Probably would not have a, a piece for Montessori at this time, because we've been looking, we can't find anything. Yeah, I guess that's.
Well, I would add, reducing the cost a bit as well. You know, we, we just, what you just explained is one of the reasons why we put forward a referendum that included a new school, because it doesn't cost as much as you think. You see the price tag for the new school, but then you, you have, if we don't get the new school, we've got all this other stuff we have to do. Millions of dollars into the two schools that would have been combined. Aren't, now there's more kids at John Muir than there otherwise would have been, probably a bigger addition there. And so some of that gets, gets filled back in. But I still think lowering that amount a little bit, when I look at some of the reasons for the no vote, you know, I, I, I do think the, the amount seemed to be one of the factors anyway.
Good feedback.
Doesn't have to be, I'm not, it doesn't have to be, you know, fifty million dollars lower, but I think lower than it was.
Thank you. Yes.
Today, I've held, I held seven meetings with seven of the elementary school principals. And we had a conversation last week, Thursday and Friday, with all, all of the schools across the district and just talked to them about the scope of work that was originally proposed in the referendum. And is that still needed? Is there something that we missed? Is there something that is maybe more of a want than a need that could be backed out? Because we're trying to refine and hone for Bob and Keith, what, what a number would look like to address, Lance, what you're talking about. And we didn't find anything. But I said to the, I said to the principals, if you had to stand in front of the board and justify to them, this is the need that we have, and this is what it's solving for us. Could you do that with every single item? And for, to, to a T, they said yes. There really wasn't anything in there that wasn't. But there are some things we can do, move some things around, as Bob alluded to. There are some other items. Can I mention that?
Sure.
Okay. One of the things we, we talked about was LED lighting. LED lighting has a, a, a great payback. Costs have come down by probably fifty percent in the last two years. We're going to pull all the LE, all the LED lighting out of that, fund it with a different source, and do it in conjunction with the work. So that would pull out about, I think about six million dollars out of the budget. That can be self-funded just with the energy savings alone.
Efficiency exemption then, funding? Yeah.
We could have, but that legislation is kind of on the back burner right now. We're waiting for it to come back. But we could probably do it with fund balance and paying back fund balance, sort of like our scoreboard project, but without revenue from scoreboard sponsors, savings from energy. So we pay back fund balance. That would be a solution, right? It's very complicated. And when, and I've spent a lot of time with the board, and as a result, you guys get it. You really do. You guys spend enough time talking about how you spend more money, you get more aid. You get more aid, you tax less. And if your spending drops down precipitously, you, you get less aid and you get more of a tax. And it just doesn't really, it's not as intuitive, and it doesn't go in the direction you think it's going to all the time. If I had a half hour in front of every taxpayer, I'm convinced we could, we could tell them exactly why those things happen. But unfortunately, you don't. You have five minutes at best to talk about finance, because the rest of the time is talking about the projects and how it affects student learning, and what happens if we don't pass it, and all of those things. But you're exactly right. And it is complicated. And what will happen if the referendum fails? Because a lot of people in the survey said, I wanted my taxes to go down, so I voted no. Well, unless we ignore all of our needs over and over and over again, eventually, we're going to pass a referendum, right? We need to catch up on deferred maintenance. So eventually, we're going to pass a referendum. And if you fail five of them in a row, you're right, your taxes are going to go down. And I'd hate to see what our buildings are going to look like. And then what are we going to do to address deferred maintenance? Now we're going to a referendum, and it's going to go up from seven bucks to, to ten dollars. That gets to be a pretty tough sale. So people that think my taxes are going to go down if I vote a referendum down, voting a referendum down doesn't make your taxes decrease. Voting five referendum in a row down will make your taxes decrease. And then what's going to happen after that? It's going to make your taxes go way up, because now we're playing catch-up. Explaining that dynamic between all those things is tough.
Your home value is going to go down.
So is that, it's kind of what you're saying, right?
Okay, so this isn't an action item, and I think that more discussion would happen with a proposal.
A proposal? All right.
We don't have an action item here. I think we've heard some board members express some concerns. I don't know if anybody else has any other, okay, yeah, sure, absolutely.
Couple of things from a financial side of it. When we were here back in August, oh, I'm sorry. When we were here back in August, we were looking at interest rates for schools being around three percent, maybe just a little bit under three percent. Those rates have now, have continued to drop. We're seeing schools getting twenty-year money at two and a quarter, two and a half percent. And on a big number like you're talking about, it's significant. It's, it, it's, it's just significant. Your needs aren't going away. Your needs are still there. If you delay, you're going to pay more in, in, in inflation on work that needs to be done, if you truly have the needs, which you do. So you've got lower, you've still got prime time. You've got lower interest rates. You've got a very competitive market, a, a, a district not too far from here. We just had a final bid pack. And typically, we are getting two to three bids per trade. We got five and six bids per trade. So the, the contractors are hungry out there because the market due to COVID has dried up. So you're getting very good bid packages out there. And then the economic impact to the area. It's not your job to provide jobs for the community, but based on the size of the referendum, as anticipated, that the economic impact would be about eight hundred good-paying jobs a year for each of the next five years, about the length of the implementation. So around four thousand jobs, high-paying construction jobs over the next, uh, next five years. Okay? And then increase in the indoor air quality and the HVAC improvements, safety and security and traffic flow are something I'm hearing at every single one of the meetings that I'm going to. Got to help us out with traffic flow, getting kids in and out, because they're all being, being driven and bussed. So with that, I'll.
Okay, like I said, thank you. This isn't an action item. I'm getting a sense, though, that the, that we'd like to see a proposal that you would bring based on the information that you've described and from the survey results, and that will be an action item.
Yes, absolutely. Will do. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Levin. Always good to see you.
Pleasure.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's keep going. We have quite a few things to get through yet tonight. So we are on Agenda Item Eight-B, Neola Policy Update. There is a couple, I have a couple of questions. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns on any of these policies that came back? And Dr. Hiltz, do you have anything to say at the outset on any of them?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't interrupt. Just wanted to note that the, the policies that the board asked about last meeting, they've been updated, and they, and immediately after the number is the word update. That's how you can identify those. They're only, they only get listed in your alphabetically, so we couldn't group them necessarily. So that's how you identify them.
I do have one, the update one regarding the grievance policy. It looks like that's been revised, so the principal level isn't a required step. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's a great modification. That was one of my questions. Any other questions on any of these policies?
I have one on the therapy dog issue.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't make it clear in this policy who makes the decision. And that was one of the issues that EEA brought to us, is they wanted to like make their own decision. So the previous policy, it said the district administrator, and this one doesn't, doesn't say either way.
Okay. And could you speak to that one? And I'll, in the meantime, I'll, we're going to work separately with EEA. You know, they've requested to kind of work outside of this, so we'll work with them.
It does say to the student safety specialist.
Under the submission of written requests, we're going to come up with a form. I would like to work with the committee on that, because we'll have to come up with criteria as well. And that will be submitted to the student safety specialist for review and then for determination. It's a member of the people services team, yes.
Right.
I also have a question on the therapy dog policy. So going to page two, sorry, it's the part where it has to, oh, sorry, it's the first part. Only therapy dogs that hold the current title of American Kennel Club Therapy Dog will be approved. So this is under number two on the first page. Looking at other similar policies, they have that line, but then also an option of, or that are registered certified by one of the following national therapy dog organizations that could be approved. And they list Alliance of Therapy Dogs, Therapy Dogs International, Pet Partners. They have five different ones. Was there, what was the reason for not including that to be a little bit more broad in the, in the possibility of having that dog approved?
So Keith and I had talked about that. We would have to come back and change the policy anytime we would change who we're going to accept it from. We wanted to keep it tight to begin with, because we know there's many ways therapy dogs can get certified right now, including online. And we knew that the American Kennel Club was for sure the top-ranked one. We wanted to start there.
Okay. Yeah, no, I did look at the American Kennel Club Therapy Dog, and these were all listed. So that's why it seemed, it wasn't some, you know, random getting certified online without proof. I don't, I, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to find out the reason for it.
Yeah, I think, you know, as this is a new area for us, I think we just wanted to be cautious.
I also don't think you're going to have that many submissions, and if something comes up, I'm sure you'll work with it and see.
Yeah. I have a lot of inquiries, so whether or not those would come through as submissions, I knew, I do know there's a lot of interest currently out there.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Anybody have any other questions on the therapy dog policy, or any of these that we are about to move to approve? No? Okay. Hearing none, I'm seeking a motion to approve the revised policies as presented.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so we have a number of things, just to summarize very briefly. These are not action items. These were things that happened at the Education Operations Committee meeting last month. There was the legal expense summary for first quarter that was presented by Bob Tess. Then moving on to B3, there was a presentation of financial projection model assumptions projected, or I'm sorry, presented by Bob Tess and Noel Torson work on that. Then, let's see, B4, whole child, whole Wassa optimization of resources, goal OR1. That information was presented to the board at Education Operations Committee meeting. Then we also had some information presented by Jennifer Rousher regarding the accelerated automotive pathway. And then we get to student fee requests for the 2021-2022 school year. We did discuss it at the Education Operations Committee meeting, but it's here now tonight for final action. I am seeking a motion to approve the 2021-2022 student fee list as presented.
So moved.
All, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student fee requests for 2021-2022 school year approved. Also, at Education Operations Committee meeting was the 4K program agreement. And I am seeking a motion to approve the 4K program agreement with Wassa Childcare East and West, Mountain View Montessori, Woodson YMCA Wassa Branch, and Newman Catholic Schools.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Finally, at Education Operations Committee meeting, there was also a school safety drill update. Not an action item tonight. Okay, Agenda Item Nine, New Business. So we have a calendar update regarding afternoon parent teacher conferences. I don't think there's new information that needs to be presented because we addressed this last month. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So then I am seeking a motion to continue offering afternoon parent teacher conference time each fall. This would be in addition to evening conference time, not necessarily the same day. We discussed how that was determined at a building level.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. And then we have a presentation tonight by Jennifer Rousher, pandemic experiences, secondary student achievement, and engagement.
Well, Dr. Rousher makes her way to the microphone. Just want to let you know that, you know, obviously, we, we monitor our students' achievement at the secondary level with the, the traditional letter grades. It's a little clearer, easier to compare, you know, this year to last and whatnot. And we saw some disturbing trends, and we thought this would be something the board would want to know about, and what we potentially could do to address it. So Dr. Rousher is here to share some feedback.
Hi, everybody. First of all, I just have to point out, normally, I would wear a more neutral mask to a board meeting, but I made kind of a funny error this morning. I visited John Muir. And I try to visit the schools as regularly as I can, and I have all the different masks in my car, so I can represent appropriately whichever school I'm in. And so I got there this morning, and I visited with people in the office, and I walked through the halls, and I poked my head in a couple classroom windows, and then I went back to my car and realized I was wearing my Horace Mann mask the whole time I was in John Muir. So apologies to them. They were all very kind. That's why we're representing John Muir tonight, because they, they didn't get their due this morning. But I also bring that up just because I want you to know, although I am the one standing here tonight, this presentation is really a team effort. All of the principals, all the leadership teams helped me to gather this information, and some of it does just come directly. this information, and some of it does just come directly from experiences being out in the schools and talking with teachers, being in their classrooms. So it's really a team effort. So any successes in this tonight, please credit the team. Any errors are mine. I am not a statistician, but I do have some data for you, and I'll do my best to present it as accurately and sincerely as I can here. The focus really is on first quarter, and it's on just grade six through 12. As Dr. Hilt said, we had those quarter grades as kind of a hard stop. And since students were 100% virtual, all of them, for first quarter, that was a natural place to stop and look at data. So you've probably heard, and we heard earlier tonight even, this is a topic that's been in the national news. Just this morning, I read another article in the Journal Sentinel asking these kinds of questions, saying, you know, what's going on with students academically? What's going on with students' wellness? What's going on with their engagement overall? So this is our opportunity to look at those questions right here in Wassa. Thank you, Cassie. So really, you know our mission, and we've talked before about, yeah, this pandemic time, we tried to narrow our focus to the three areas that you see, serving families, staff wellness, student achievement. And the focus for this piece is really on that student achievement. So we're really trying to answer the questions, well, how did our students do during first quarter when everybody was learning virtually? And really, how can we maintain our focus on our high expectations for student learning in spite of COVID-19? So the format is kind of a what, so what, now what approach. You know, what are we experiencing? So what are we doing about it? And then now what, what might be next steps? So you'll see us talk, or you see me talk about engagement and achievement during the pandemic. That's kind of the what. The so what, we'll look at our flexibility and responsiveness, what we're doing right now, because it's certainly our right now need, but we're also projecting into the future. So you'll see some of those things. And I encourage you to just listen and reflect, try to make sense of things. It makes a lot of sense to me because I've been working on this for a while, but just take your time, let it sink in, and certainly at the end, we can discuss and do questions as much as you would like. So engagement during the pandemic. This first slide is looking at middle school attendance. And it's comparing students with five or more unexcused absences from first quarter last year to this year, and then projecting even into the semester, even though we're not quite done. So you can see there's a big difference when you look at quarter one, going from having 11 students with five or more unexcused absences to 137 across our two brick and mortar middle schools. And then when you project in the whole semester last year, first semester, we had 48 students that hit that mark. So far, even though we're not done with the semester, we have 241. So that was a big change from last year. If you look at a high school attendance comparison, again, looking at students with five or more unexcused absences, at a glance, it looks much more even. But a couple of things to think about is last year, first quarter, all the students had five synchronous days of instruction. So attendance was taken each period all five days. This year, we've been working with four synchronous days of instruction throughout, so we're not measuring the same number of days. And also, some of the daily schedules shifted this year. For example, here at Wassa East, students, instead of having eight periods in a day, have four periods one day, and then the next four the next day, and they alternate. So the numbers don't align beautifully in terms of doing this kind of comparison. But it's the information we have right now, and so it's kind of said to us, we need to keep paying attention to this and figure out more things to make sense of attendance as an engagement measure. One of the stories I've heard, though, when I've been out talking with teachers and talking with principals, talking with staff, is this phrase about some students being logged in, but their cameras are off. So during those virtual learning times, when they're learning remotely, the students may be on the screen, they see their name, but teachers and their peers are not seeing them because their cameras are off. And what this is kind of representing for us is this sense of anonymity. It's a little bit easier when you have the option to turn your camera off, to hide, to slip into the background, to not engage. And in a classroom, if Cassie had her head down, I might sort of just sidle up near her. I would use proximity. I might even spat down next door and just say, hey, are you okay? When we're looking at that black, or that blank screen with just a name, we lose that. So that's definitely a concern that our teachers have had. I think the other piece, just with attendance in terms of storytelling, is when we look at different demographics of students, when we look at different student groups, there are some students that we have all, or some groups we've always been worried about attendance-wise. And then there's some groups who we've not had to worry about because their attendance is really strong. Some of that has started to shift. So we're seeing different students and different groups of students that have concerns with attendance, and that's, obviously, that's something that makes us nervous. So I'm trying not to cut off this group. Thank you, though. So then when you look at our charter schools, you might be thinking about, well, where does WAVE fit in, or where do EEA fit in? And as far as measuring attendance, regardless of pandemic, they always look at attendance and engagement differently. Both E and WAVE are intended to be self-paced. WAVE in particular is intended to be asynchronous all of the time. And so a lot of their attendance and engagement measures are based on students setting individual goals, and then teachers helping them track, are they making the progress they want to and need to, to be successful? So I don't have hard numbers for you with them, but I would just say that it's interesting in general, when you think about our WAVE students and our EEA students, because their systems are set up to be individualized and self-paced, there are conversations that happen when students sign up for those schools. Typically, the student's family and the student will meet with someone from the school, and there's a very honest conversation about, this is what we can offer you. Here are the skills you and your family are going to need to bring. So I think our EEA students and our WAVE students are set up differently because they're, those attributes are discussed with them, as opposed to some of our students who, well, all of them last spring were thrown into remote learning, and now this year, they're choosing, not necessarily based purely on academics, but they may be choosing based on family needs or other concerns with the virus and so on. So they may not be set up as well as they would be if they were choosing purely on their educational experience. I think the other thing I could add there is just, in general, looking at EEA, and then think about, that's about 60 students right now. In talking with the principal and the staff there, they've said roughly 80% of their students are performing the same way as they did last year. 10% are actually doing better. And they attribute that somewhat just anecdotally to, there's some, like, social conflicts or distractions that aren't happening right now. And then 10% of the students are doing worse. I think another thing to notice there, again, if you think about 60 students, that's maybe six students who are struggling more than they used to. That is a pretty reasonable number to manage, to intervene with, to put additional supports around. As we start looking at some of the achievement across our brick and mortar, traditional middle schools and high schools, you'll see much less manageable numbers. So that's where, looking at achievement then, middle school comparison, and this is students with Fs. So the number of students with one or more Fs during first quarter, the pink is last year first quarter, and the purple is this year first quarter. And you can see, again, just a stark difference. And it's definitely different grade to grade. About last year, we had 15 sixth graders at quarter one who had one or more Fs. This year, we have 58. You compare that to our eighth graders, we had 59 last year, now we have 240. So those are big, big changes. Those are a lot more students who need us to pull out kind of our best strategies, our best approaches, and even new approaches to help them be successful. There are students who are successful. If you look at the little numbers on the bottom, oh, could you go back? Thank you. I said that 15 to 58 number that seems really striking at sixth grade. Well, 89% of our sixth graders are still doing just fine, no Fs at all. But the concern is, of course, if we look at anything we do as educators, and specifically our strategic plan, our goal is for all kids to be successful. So even though some students are doing well, we pay attention to those who are struggling because we want everybody to succeed ultimately. So now this one is looking at high school, and again, just first quarter, but this chart looks at the number of Fs. So you think about a high school student having multiple classes throughout the day. This is the number of Fs that were earned overall. So it's not number of students. When we look at this, again, you see a stark difference from fall of last year first quarter to now. And what really struck me is the fact that we have 856 Fs represented by our ninth graders. And the reason that one was striking to me is that if we look at research over time, as well as our own experiences, as soon as a student earns an F in ninth grade, and I'm thinking about more like a semester F, which we're not there yet, but if they were to fail a class at a semester, that makes them less likely to graduate from high school overall. And it seems like, how could that correlate? But there is a lot of research that suggests that. So to see that many Fs in our freshmen makes me go, oh, my goodness. And one of my colleagues looking at this, his first response was, oh, my gosh, that makes it hard to breathe. I don't think I can breathe well when I look at this because we worry about our students. So obviously, we hope that those numbers will come down, that by semester, some of the interventions you'll hear about tonight are more successful, but certainly a reason for concern. So now this is a different angle. Again, now we're back to looking at number of students with Fs. And rather than comparing last year to this year, again, just looking at students by grade. So you can see definitely concerns for all four grades, but the freshmen and sophomore have even higher numbers of students with Fs. So that means this is not just a fix this between now and the end of this semester, or even now in the next school year. This is an ongoing concern because we want to bring these students back on track so that they are successful three years from now, and beyond, obviously. Sure.
But an observation, if you go back to the last slide, you can see the increase being even greater. If you look at last year's ninth grade, 189. Their sophomores this year, they're having 571. Taking a look at what the studies show and having put these numbers together for many years, that's a concerning thing for me. We're losing those students.
Yes.
And the telling, the telltale story here will be down the line, I'm concerned about by the time they're seniors, like you said. That's just an observation and something we should be aware of. It's going to be hard to get these kids caught up again.
Yes. I can go ahead. And that was one of the comments I have here. Again, we have lots of students who are still successful, if you look at some of the numbers on the bottom there. You know, we have anywhere from 59 to 76% at any grade level who do not have any Fs, and yay them, and yay to their teachers who are working hard to make those things happen. But as you said, Jim, there's, there are students struggling now who didn't struggle before. And so that just raises questions for us. Dr. Hilt?
I have some insights. I know we don't have final numbers at semester. Any comparison between our students who are in person and virtual, or does that come a little later?
I, that will probably be a lot later, like more like at semester.
Yeah.
Simply because, and that's a, that's a good reminder, though. This data is just based on first quarter when everybody was 100% virtual. So as we move forward more, we'll be able to pull more data for you and do some comparison between students who are learning at home and students who are learning in person. I can tell you anecdotally, and you'll see this again in the slides later, is that when I talk with teachers, there's this sense of, if I could just reach them. One counselor said, it's time, I just, I want to reach through the screen and try to, you know, help this child. And others have said things like, oh, if I could just get this child here with me, I wouldn't let him or I wouldn't let her fail. And I think it comes to, like, we have strategies that we know how to use when the kids are with us.
Sure. On that, then, just going back to slide, the one about students being logged in but the camera off, why isn't there a policy that you have to be on camera? I mean, I teach adults, and I teach online, and if their mic isn't working, and if they are not on camera, they don't get attendance. Certainly, there should be room for discretion. You know, maybe somebody's not feeling their greatest or whatever, but it seems to me, if a student's not on camera, they should be.
There certainly is an expectation that their cameras be on, and that they are doing more than just being logged in, that they're participating, eventing classrooms. And I've watched teachers very intentionally call on somebody who might be in person, and then also call out to, say, a virtual audience and do all kinds of things to engage them. So it's not so much the attendance piece. It's just that there's, they're supposed to do certain things. They don't always do them. And it's harder to connect. Another story we hear is, we have, when we have students with us all the time, and I know that Keith also happens to play basketball, and Jim's the coach. Well, if Keith isn't doing well in my English class, I certainly talked Keith. I might contact his parents, and I go to Jim and say, hey, at practice, can you mention? And sometimes that relationship might hold more sway. So it's some of those things we lose when the kids aren't in the buildings in traditional way, or aren't in the buildings as much as they normally would be.
I mean, is the student who has their camera off and is not responsive marked absent?
It depends on whether or not they are completing work over time. So for example, a student who is 100% virtual, or even just on their virtual days, their remote days, if they're logged in, they're assumed present. At the same time, if they're not logged in, they might be marked absent. But then by the end of the week, teachers are doing their best to go back and say, oh, that child who didn't log in for that live meet still emailed me, or still did the work, or still, you know, participated in some other activities. I'm going to change that back to present. I don't think we are doing the other as much, simply because we're trying to do anything we can to maintain those relationships. But I have had questions just recently from some of our assistant principals who focus on attendance to say, is this something we should take another look at for second semester?
You know, for in-person classes, we wouldn't allow a student to avoid absenteeism just because they are passing their classes. I might have been able to pass some classes by skipping them, but I wasn't allowed to do that. I don't know what is so different about today that we would just, you know, because maybe the student who's passing the class would be getting an A if they were actually attending the class.
And obviously, being present, whether it's virtually or in person, is much more likely to have you be successful. I think the thing that has caused us hesitation is it's very difficult to identify why a student is not engaged from home. And it could be the student lacking some skills, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a couple minutes. It could be something that's beyond the child's control. There could be something in that, the environment where the child has to do the learning that's causing an issue. You know, it could be a technical issue. It could be a support issue. It could be, I have this other responsibility when I'm home, and we can't always gauge that well.
Yeah, I understand that, but we can't gauge why students don't attend their first class of the day in person either. They might have something going on at home, but they still get marked absent if they don't show up.
The districts who have rules saying that you cannot require students to turn their cameras on, and that's mostly a needs base. Other districts do not have students with the bandwidth at home to do it.
I'm less concerned with the camera being on than I am with someone being non-responsive if their name is mentioned. You know, that'd be the sign to me that they weren't actually attending my class. I say their name or ask them to comment, and I don't hear anything. It's because they're not even in the room.
Is there somebody...
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, I was just, I have two more slides on kind of the data, and then I will move into some of the things that we are trying to do. And revisiting attendance is definitely one of the, I can tell you some things that we're doing for the kids that we're worried about where there's just no contact, and then revisiting the process overall is something that has come up as a feature.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't misunderstand. I'm not telling you what you should do because you would know more about it than I would know. I'm just trying to understand why we're doing it that way, because it just seems so opposite of what we normally would tolerate for attendance at a class.
Is there a way to get comparisons with other districts who chose other strategies than ours?
I don't know how willing, say, our partners might be to share this very specific data with us. I can tell you, it's very common for our principals to talk with other principals in the, in the conference, and there typically are about, I would say roughly monthly Valley Conference principal meetings, and they are hearing similar concerns. So it's, we are not a standout in our conference. We're not necessarily a standout in our state. We're not a standout nationally in having some of these issues. Why I think we have the potential to stand out is to say, this is not all right. We're not going to say, oh, well, COVID- We're not going to say, oh, well, COVID, our kids are too important to us.
Be useful to know with the districts that stayed live all fall, if their first quarter saw a similar sort of dip. That would give us a little more insights into how much we can actually do about it.
I don't think we have grade data from the other schools, just the anecdotal that Jennifer mentioned.
Right. Okay, I think we talked about this one. Thank you. So just one other way to look at some of the data from the, the two high schools combined, the brick and mortar high schools. And this doesn't present answers, like I said, it's just another way to look at the data. What the principals did is they said, well, what kinds of F's are these? Because in a traditional one-hundred-point scale, essentially zero to fifty-nine could represent an F. And that might even vary a little bit with some classes. So we looked at the number of F's that fall in different percent ranges. And there are some that are in black, like the top, like the kids who are within ten percent. We didn't even sort of put on the, the chart initially because there have always been some students who studied, or struggled a little bit or who maybe weren't doing amazingly a quarter but got it together by semester with, with help and support. But if you look at the ranges, we have five hundred and forty-five F's where students have earned a zero to ten percent in a class. That is a very, very limited amount of engagement. And honestly, somebody to be this far into school with a zero percent, something else is going on there. And what's striking about this is the, the pure number. Again, it's not that we haven't sometimes had students who really struggled before, but the number of struggling students that teachers are trying to put support around and, you know, bring back in is just much greater and the need is much more intense. And so I, I worry about students in that scenario starting to feel hopeless. As if, you know, they've dug a hole, there's, some of them will look at it mathematically and say, there's no way I can pass this class by semester. And so we lose them even further. And I would say the teachers become very frustrated because they know there are things that, that there are strategies they have for the students, maybe that are in the blue range or even the black in the bottom. But the, the intense work, as you were suggesting, I think, Jeff, that it takes really depletes our teachers who are working very, very hard already. And so that's another conversation we have about how, how can we share this? For example, if one of the reasons to be in that zero to ten percent range is really a lack of attendance of, of any sort, engagement in any sort, we might need to do things that say, you know, let, let us as a principal team try to figure out what's going on there. Why don't, you know, one of our assistant principals in an S R will go do a home visit and try to figure things out? And those are things that teachers cannot do and teach at the same time. So we're trying to find ways to balance that and say, you do the things that you are amazing at as teachers, and we'll try to take on some of these other challenges to sort of share that work. So again, just a little bit of storytelling, when you, when you pull kind of that, the engagement piece and the achievement piece together, what we really see is the gap widening for our students. Our students who have, for the most part, have done well, and, you know, some of them, as we saw, are continuing to do well. So they're moving forward. And the students who are struggling are staying or moving backwards. So that achievement gap is getting greater, and that's certainly a concern. Related to that, that brings up equity concerns. And at this point, we have not dug into our local data in this way. But if you, again, if you follow any of the state or national information, typically, students who struggle are students who are already part of a group that is somehow considered disadvantaged or has struggled in the past. So for example, students living in poverty may have already had struggles with achievement. This is exacerbating those kinds of things. So again, we haven't looked at our local data yet, but that's definitely a concern. The other thing, as I was saying, we know there are certain skills that remote learning requires that we might not think of as traditional academic skills. So I'm not talking about reading or the ability to, you know, be really fluent in your math facts, but more things like the ability to be self-motivated, to stay organized, to advocate for yourself when you have a problem, to be able to reach out to an adult and say, I screwed up, I need help. Sometimes we just lump those together in like executive functioning, and that's what the little brain is supposed to relate there, the silhouette. So some of our students may be struggling because they have not yet developed some of those skills that would support them in remote learning. Again, you think about Wave, which is designed as an online school. They have a whole list of attributes you can find on their website where they talk about things like being self-motivated and an independent learner, or really being good at time management, having effective writing skills, being personally committed, being computer literate. And when a student decides they're interested in Wave, the student and usually a parent sits down with somebody at Wave, often our Wave principal Jenny Seymour, and they have conversations about where are you strong in this? Where are you not? Who else do you have on your team who will help you with the things you're not as strong at? When we have students that wouldn't necessarily have chosen remote learning, they may not have developed all those skills yet. So that's one of those things that we're playing with. I also put Leader and Me up there, that's our social and emotional learning piece that we're working on. And if you're familiar with Covey's Seven Habits, it's really based on those ideas. And it's the same kind of concept, you know, do you know how to put first things first? Can you be proactive? Do you know how to take care of yourself and balance self-care with doing intense work? All of those things come out. So we're just kind of wondering about, are some of the, you know, some of our students lacking, through no fault in their own, they just haven't developed these skills yet. So that could be a potential strategy to help them while they're either learning in a hybrid model or in a remote way. And then, as I mentioned before, there are some obstacles that kids don't control that we may not even be aware of. So that was kind of the what. So this is now, we're sort of transitioning into the so what, so what are we doing? And again, to keep going with the Covey idea, we have to control the things that we do control or focus on the things that we have control over as adults. So this piece from Danielson's Framework for Teaching is really about flexibility and responsiveness. It's one of the components of our strategic plan all the time, but it's become especially important now. And if you take a look, it's about making major adjustments to how we teach and the individual lessons. It's about being responsive to students and really trying to find ways to make learning relevant for them while still having those high expectations. And it's about persistence. And I would say our teachers are amazing at persistence. They are constantly coming up with different ways and different strategies to try to figure out, okay, this didn't work for this child, maybe this would work. Hey, what have you tried? Okay, I'm going to try that as well. So those are the things that we're really focused on as we go forward there. Thank you. So this slide is about some of the specific things that we've been doing. You see some of our current strategies down the left, and I'll just highlight a few. As I said, our teachers are working very hard, they are being very creative, they're using a lot of different approaches. And so are our administrators, our building leaders. But look at the, the relationship piece. When I'm out in the schools and I see some of the in-person learners come in, that's where I really see those relationships. Just sometimes being in a commons or in the entryway of school, there's a support staff member there often checking students in and out at the high schools just to help us keep track of, not only attendance, but contact tracing. And to see the, the interaction, even though it's distant, students being called by name, being welcomed, being asked about other things that are going on with them, those are really positive. Those relational things still happen. I happened to be in a band classroom the other day, and to watch the director very skillfully not single out the one child of a certain instrument in the room, like, you needed to speak to that section, but there was only one person of that section live. And so, you know, to find a way to give that particular student some important feedback and yet make sure she still felt welcome and included. Our teachers are doing really amazing with the, the relationship piece there. With home visits, I mentioned that. And it's, it's not uncommon for some of our administrators or our people services team members to go out to students' homes when they're really worried. Sometimes it's just a, a positive, like, hey, we heard you need this, and they'll kind of do a porch drop version of something. It could be toilet paper, it could be something they need for their academics, it's kind of whatever the families need. One of our middle schools, and well, actually, all of our schools have sort of student support teams, multi-tiered system of support teams, to be official, formerly known as RTI, Response to Intervention. But we have groups that look at, okay, what students are really rising to our highest level of concern for a variety of reasons. At one point shortly before Thanksgiving, at one of our middle schools, we had about thirty-two, I think thirty-three students on the list. And a typical year maybe would have had three at that time. So they did some, some home visits just before Thanksgiving. They were able to engage with fifteen of those students and get them somehow partially reconnected to school. So it's a very powerful tool. But you can see it's, it's also a time-consuming one to send a couple of adults out to an individual home. Other things is really the in-person pieces. So whether that's hub opportunities or simply inviting students to, to come in, sometimes it looks like maybe a student who's a hundred percent virtual saying, would you like to be in the building for just a couple hours on Friday? If there's a concern about the virus, for example, you can share with families. On Friday, is there a lot fewer people in the building overall? This is how we could set it up, and it might just be a way for them to get that kind of check-in and support. Sometimes the in-person invitations are, we noticed that you do really well on the two days you're here and you struggle the two days you're home. Would you like to just be in the building for those other two days? Not necessarily go into your classes because that might disrupt the social distancing, but can we give you a structure, can we give you a space to work that helps you stay on track? It's not flashy to sit, you know, at school on your screen. But again, at least they're there and they feel some connection. Also, some of the, I would say, a lot of our hands-on or performance-based classes are trying to offer more and more of those opportunities to students and really trying to build the relevance. Some of our tech ed students in the manufacturing classes, for example, decided that, wouldn't it be great that instead of having these giant sanitizer tubs just sort of sitting on this chair here or up on this desk here, what if they had beautiful brackets and they were mounted kind of the same place every time you went into a classroom? So they're designing them, and they're going to manufacture them, and they're going to put them up there. So those are the things that teachers are, are doing to try to really make the learning relevant and to create those in-person connections as much as they can. Extracurriculars is on the list. Sometimes people view that as, truly as an extra, and I kind of wish it had a different name because often it's not extra. You know, our activities and our athletics are the things that connect students to school. And for some kids can be a reason for them to care about being in school and being engaged. And I still see our, our coaches and our advisors really being creative about that at, at both the middle schools and the high schools. So certainly, you see our sports teams, but then you have pep band here at East, for example, has a plan where one of the basketball games, the pep band members will gather in here in distance, and their music will be streamed live in so they can do their pre-game show. So they'll do some of their pep music, they'll do school song, they'll be able to do the banner, the Star Spangled Banner, and then the athletes will hear that even though the kids won't be in the gym with them. So there's just really creative things like that that are happening to help kids still have this experience. I think it was last week, Wausau West celebrated homecoming. And there were pictures of the drum line going right down the halls. So that, and that's, you know, think about homecoming, that's something that's student-led. So our students are engaging and having a voice there as well. So those, those are happy stories I can tell. Some of the new challenges are very real, though. I mentioned the shifting attendance patterns. Also, one of the things with attendance that has been difficult is that we don't have truancy court as we did before. And this kind of goes to your point, Lance, of, isn't there something we can do? Well, it used to be, we could go down the referral process. And it sounds negative, the idea of like, well, do we really want to send students to court? No. But what was positive about it is that might often trigger a variety of community organizations to wrap support around not only the student but the family. So with truancy court not functioning the same way as it has, it's taken some tools away. With visitors being limited in the buildings, it's taken some mentor and social, like social services type supports away. We're trying to get back to that, but again, it's just a challenge we weren't facing before. And then I would say communication overall is, is just hard. As you know, when you're trying to do things virtually, it's not the same as in person. So even our communication with our families, and we've, we've had a lot of conversations. I think the fact that all of us as adults have this constant buzz of pandemic-related things in our brains. So in a previous year, you might have seen something from your school, or you might have gotten a piece of information, and you're like, oh, good, got it. Put it on my calendar, I'm all set. Now it might take two or three times because we're all just dealing with so much information. So then where are we headed next? What are some of the things that we're thinking about future-wise? I guess if I had to sum up our conversations, I'm, I'm very proud of our teams, all of our staff. I would say we are striving for innovation, not remediation. As I said before, there, you know, one approach to this is to say, oh, there's a pandemic. That's a bummer, kids are behind. That's not acceptable. And I don't think any of us feel like that's an okay approach. So I've got a variety of things listed there. I would say some of it comes to teachers trying to figure out how they can have more contact, more connection with more kids. That's probably the number one thing I hear when I'm out walking around. I ran into a couple of math teachers the other day, and they were having this intense conversation about these really cool group conversations that had happened among students in their math classes. So this just tickled me as a former English teacher. Kids in groups, appropriately distanced, but talking and getting really excited about math and saying math things that I have not used myself for a long time. And they were saying how wonderful it was, and then they stopped and said, but you know, the, the conversations didn't seem as rich when I stopped, when I looked into the Google Meet group, the kids who were still at home. So they're, they're doing these things, they, they want these connections, but they know it's not quite where they want it to be yet. They're trying to figure out how to improve those. Other things we're looking at are those, those mid-year, like, credit recovery opportunities. Again, in a typical year, say at the high school level, a student might fail a semester, and we'd say, ooh, you really need that half-credit back. Maybe you should do summer learning with us. Maybe you should retake that class. Well, we're not comfortable saying, let's just wait and use those traditional things. They're, they're on the table, they're possibilities. But we're trying to figure out other creative ways that we can help students to make that credit up during the school year, to restart that learning immediately. And again, to use math as an example, if you fail first semester of math, you probably missed some skills that you're going to need to be successful second semester. So is there some way that we can start to build that in and still keep your learning going forward? So not stopping and remediating, but innovating and trying to accelerate and compact curriculum so kids can keep learning. And I have the seven habits and Leader and Me up there again. This next semester, a lot of the learning will be staff learning. But you know how our teachers operate. If they learn something that might help students, they will start building those things into their lessons even if we're not fully implementing until later on. So that's, that's kind of where we are. These are things that we're thinking about. Oh, I mentioned the, the truancy court. One of the things Angie and Henry and that safety, the student safety specialists and people services in general, they're trying to reach out to our court system and to social services and say, okay, if that's not an option, how else can we, you know, collaborate and wrap arms around kids and families? So that's another piece that's, that's going on right now to try to improve. So to the, the key takeaways, and then I certainly welcome more discussion and questions. When I put these pictures together, sort of, my hope was you would look at that person holding his head, maybe her head, don't know, and say, is that supposed to be a student or an adult? And I would get to say, yes. Because I do, I think it, it would be insincere to not, you know, let you know that our, our staff are struggling as much as our students, and it's because they, they care so much about what they're doing. But our response, whether it's an adult or a student, is that, yes, this work is hard, but it's critically important work. Student learning is critically important, not just for the students but for our community overall. So we are going to keep our expectations high. We're going to keep reaching forward, we're going to keep being flexible and responsive. We are going to persist. And I just think that something that has really resonated with me is the idea of, we, we hear a lot about resilience. How do we help our kids be resilient? How do we be resilient as adults? And resilience increases when people feel they are making a purposeful contribution. So we're going to keep supporting staff so that they can feel like they are doing the work they are meant to do, they're called to do. And we're going to keep supporting kids so that they feel like they have a reason to care. kids so that they feel like they have a reason to care and a reason to produce and hopefully that is what will get us where we need to be. That was a lot of stuff.
Well, thank you.
I have two. First of all, I think this tells us we need to do more work on executive functioning training with our kids, starting at very young ages, and also recognize that some of our kids, especially kids like those on the autism spectrum, will never fully develop their executive functioning and we need to make steps for them in or out of a pandemic. But the other thing is, is back to the referendum. Can we use referendum money, if that's what we, how we ask for it, to hire teachers, long-term subs, whatever you want to call them, to come into our schools and help these kids get caught up? Plus subsidize the money for summer teaching so that they get their full salary, their full hourly wage? Because I know summer is more limited. So that would encourage more teachers to teach and we could get these kids caught up at least for one or two summers.
We would have to pose the question that way. It would be allowable, I think. You just have to, you know, be, be real open and not transparent about it.
I think Jane has a very good point. Going back to your RTI teams, you're going to have to expand your RTI teams in order to help the students who have fallen behind, to catch them up. You take them to look at math, and I'm preaching to the choir here, I, I understand that, but you take them in math, if they have missed some of the standards that they need in order to move on into the next semester. If a person could come in and tutor those standards forward, that's another way of avoiding those F's that continue to build up down the road. That might be something that we look at into the future because you're always going to be dealing with F grades, students that are not wanting to learn at that time. So this might be an opportunity for us to take a look at how can we intervene at an earlier time. And I'm kind of using Education E's which you, you know what I'm talking about. But the bottom line is, these failures will continue and grow like that graph that I was referring to. And I hate to see that happen because we're going to find that our standards are not getting taught the way we would like to get them taught because we don't have the ability to differentiate our instruction right now. It's virtual and that's difficult. So I, I appreciate what you've shown us because I think many of us probably realize this might happen in looking at a third that might do well and two-thirds that we're going to have to struggle with to help them. We need to start looking at what can we do to help as we move forward.
Dr. Rousher, two comments. Just going back to Jane's comment about executive functioning and the struggles that the students are experiencing, I mean, we, adults struggle with virtual learning because of the time management requirements and staying motivated. And asking for help can be difficult for students, especially if it's not clear to them or if they've only heard once. So I can imagine students that maybe they don't have somebody at home that's, that's, that's supportive or involved. Maybe they're feeling shame because they are falling back and then, you know, I can just imagine all these things. Have you considered some kind of training, just very short, a video with some multiple-choice questions of, you know, these scenarios that a student might face and then having those students be able to pick that? Certainly don't want to add more work to anybody's anything, but I think that students need a, a consistent message and they're probably getting it from some teachers but maybe not others. And there are students that aren't being captured with the message here of, "You need to ask for help if you're falling behind. You need to practice good time management." So that's, that's one concern because I don't see anything kind of related to that on your possible next steps. And then the other one, just to go back to the students who aren't on camera, and I totally understand where there's students that they are in a situation where they, they might not want to put that camera on. But then there might also be students who just don't want to be on camera. And I'm wondering what you're doing to try to capture those students because getting them on camera certainly could still involve them more. I understand what you're saying about it's different than being in person, but it's, it, it's certainly an improvement from not seeing that student and, and making that connection. So to the extent that that population could get on camera, are, are there efforts reaching out, you know, whether it's just teacher in the classroom, just asking privately, "Hey, I noticed you're not on camera ever. Are you okay?"
Yes, I think, I think that is happening all the time in that teachers are reaching out to individual students. Teachers are still making phone calls to parents or sending emails home and saying those, those very things. I think when several teachers are noticing the same thing, that's when they're asking for the help of like their school counselor colleagues or maybe a student who is identified for a different kind of support. It could be a gifted and talented teacher who's kind of an advocate. It could be a special ed teacher who is a case manager advocate for them, might be the person who's reaching out. So yes, those, those things are definitely happening. And I don't want to give the impression that every student whose camera is off is not engaged because you're right, some are still able to engage. I know some teachers have said, "Can you, like if we break out into groups within the Google Meet, can you turn your camera on there with a smaller group?" And some students have been able to do that. Some engage through the chat or do speak even though they're off camera. So that, that logged-in camera off is just kind of a general catch-all for some of the things that, that teachers have described. If parents are around while their kids are online, it would be a great simple parenting thing to be like, "Hey, is your camera on? Here, are those your friends?" I might have done that with my own children a couple times last spring. To your, to your point about the executive functioning, though, I would say that the biggest piece of that probably, and Angie, if you want to speak more to this, certainly you, you could do so better than I, but is that Leader and Me piece. And it not only builds the adult skills, but it'll build adults' ability to help kids develop those skills. And again, we're not doing a formal rollout until fall with the kids, but if you were to walk around Horseman, you would see all the signs up. If you would watch some of the morning announcements, the video announcements that the principals put out, you would see those things being talked about. You'll see it in some of the newsletters. And again, I'm just speaking for the, the secondary level. I would say you'd see those same things at the elementary. And that probably ties back to your referendum question, Jane, in that when people see that pupil services team, those are the people in school who are going to provide all these different wraparound services and champion some of those things.
So today is day one of vaccinations, right? So Pfizer vaccine is being delivered, I think, to four hundred and fifty locations by Wednesday morning. The Moderna vaccine will get approved later this month. We know the answer to this, these problems, which you've done a great job of laying out, is to get kids back into the classrooms. Where are we in the planning around not just the, I'm not looking for a grand reopening per se, but making the environments that we have, A, more available and accessible and less sterile, like more food options for kids? I've heard that numerous times, that there's like one option in high schools. You know, the ability to work closer together, the ability to have some of that normalcy back. I think a lot of that's going to be dependent on where we're at with the vaccination process as well. How are we thinking about that and where are we in formulating that plan?
I, I don't feel like I could speak well to the food service piece of that, but one of the things you saw in the, the next step slides is looking at possibilities for expanded hours. So principals are definitely brainstorming. How can they bring more kids back in or at least create that action for them? And we know we, we don't want to do it in a way where we give up social distancing because that's been kind of our gold standard of trying to prevent the virus from spreading and it, it's based on what we know from our contract tracing, it's working. So we definitely want to keep that, but looking at things like-
But, but there's my question. I'm, I'm sorry, that's exactly my question, is that once the vaccination process begins, how are we leveraging that tool to decrease all of these other self-imposed restrictions, which right now are very necessary, but at some point we want to get back to normal? How are we going through that evaluation and what are we using to make those determinations? Because to me, that's the million-dollar question. These are all great interventions and Band-Aids or whatever we want to call it and everybody's working their butts off to make it happen, but we have to get kids back and we have to get it into a more normal environment.
Yeah, I don't know if, if anybody else can add more to this, but you know, we, we have not really looked ahead to when the, the vaccine will be. Because my understanding is that the, the general population won't really get it until late spring, early summer. So I guess that would be really more of a public health question. I'm just going to look over and Angie, have you had any of these conversations with either medical or public health?
No, they haven't even begun talking about that yet. We just got over the hump of coming up with a new, rolling out the new quarantine. They haven't even started talking about the vaccine yet.
So we better get in front of that because you're going to, I mean, we have situations to deal with. You can't mandate it, right?
Right.
So what are you going to do if students or staff choose not to get it? It's going to happen. Does that mean that we're always going to have these, again, self-imposed restrictions? Those are really, really big decisions that we better make today because the sooner we figure that's the fault, the sooner we can get kids back in school.
Yeah, and we haven't even heard anything yet from any of our attorneys on that. They haven't come out with anything yet.
From who?
From our attorneys, from the school law attorneys. We haven't heard anything about the vaccine, how that's going to roll out, how that's going to affect us, if we can mandate it.
Have we asked?
Yeah, we can.
They haven't come out with-
No, have, have we asked? Have we said, "Here's what we need from you"?
Okay.
Because my concern is that we're going to be relying on different agencies or departments that may or may not-
I'm sorry, there's a meeting that happened last week, Monday, or a phone call, like virtual meeting with DHS. The report that I received from my state contact is that fifty thousand vaccines are arriving. They'll be distributed to eight hubs across the state tomorrow. There's another sixteen thousand that are arriving on Thursday and those will also be distributed. The vaccines are coming in lots. The first group is coming in nine hundred and seventy-five per lot, that's how they're packaged. The second group is coming in lots of one hundred. So that's sixty-six thousand vaccines that are due in the state next week, or this week. Understand that the very first wave is all of the medical providers and all of the nursing homes. We have four hundred thousand medical providers in this state who will all get access to those vaccines first. Second, we have five thousand nursing home facilities. That's not how many staff they have, that's just how many facilities. So between staff and residents there, they will take up another good chunk. And so the belief is that unless the volume picks up in the current wave process, we won't see, essential services will see the second wave whenever the medical people are done. And then the third wave will be those that have medical challenges or conditions that compromise them before it goes to the general public. So that's sort of the tiered process, as I understand from that DHS meeting that happened last Monday. And best-case estimates are summer and maybe even into fall is how it was worded because I think people are uncertain of how that volume will come. I hope you find that helpful, but that's the latest that I got from a meeting that I was on last week, Thursday.
I guess, I, I hear your question, we should, we need to be ahead of this. I guess I wasn't thinking that we would be seeing any impact in the general population from the vaccine until summer. So I assumed that these, that Dr. Rousher shared, were probably our best interventions probably for the school year.
I, yeah, I think that that is a bad assumption going into it with that thought process. I think you're going, well, there's probably a whole other meeting that we should have on, something like that then. Because if, if we're going to live with this and it's going to be these continual interventions, those numbers that she saw in the beginning slides, I mean, it's not, there is no magic bullet here, right? The, the teachers and the staff and all of you guys are doing everything you possibly can. The parents are engaged to the level that they can. You've got to get more kids back in the classroom. And I think we just, we need to identify what are those hurdles, what are the barriers, and how are we going to work collectively to get past those? And again, vaccine is part of it, but that's not going to solve everything.
I can't say I've got a, a solid answer, but I can tell you some of the things we're exploring, like those expanded hours, might be, could students come in later in the afternoon or even in the evening to get some in-person time if we can't get them all available, you know, during the day? Is there a way to take the, the percent of students and families that are interested in in-person right now and expand the amount of time that they're in-person? So you think about, you know, at the secondary level, typically they're two days in school, two days learning remotely, with the exception of Wasso West, which is a week on, week off. So exploring, are there ways to get more of those, those families who've made the decision to be in-person, more time? Obviously, we have to do that in a way that doesn't take away from the kids who are needing to choose to learn from home. And I, I do have, if it would be helpful, I have our percentages right now of virtual versus in-person because that, that flexes a little bit at the, the secondary level, but I do have those numbers updated as of today, if that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah.
And it's just going to sound like a lot of numbers, but I'll try to give you the quick rundown. At John Muir, fifty-one percent virtual, forty-nine percent in-person. Horseman, forty-five percent virtual, fifty-five percent in-person. West is forty-three percent virtual, fifty-seven percent in-person. East, as of today, is forty-eight percent virtual, fifty-two percent in-person. And then EEA is twenty-two percent virtual, seventy-eight percent in-person. They have seen a shift to the in-person because that's working better for their students. But again, remember, they're working with about sixty students overall. So it's, it's a totally different group to manage than, say, Wasso West.
So the, these numbers are based on, the numbers presented tonight were based on the first quarter, so it's full virtual. It would be useful, it doesn't have to be another repeated presentation on it, but it would be useful if you could send to us the new numbers when you're able to see how the in-person students are doing, you know, second quarter. Maybe a comparison between the students who are in-person versus the students who are full virtual.
Yes, and I, I would agree. That's something we've talked about as an education team that we'd like to bring to you. And then we should also have some elementary data as well at that point. I believe it's February we are on to do an achievement update related to the strategic plan.
I think that, that, I know that we were going to, we're not talking about wellness today, but the reality is that hopelessness goes downhill. And if the teachers are hopeless, faculty are hopeless, if we're hopeless as a board, that's going to be communicated to the public. And unfortunately, too much of what we're seeing in media is so overstressed, I mean, the negative and the number of people dying and the number of more cases and not emphasizing that-
What's the number that aren't?
And the ones that are recovering. And the resilience needs to. So we've seen that we've done some positive things. We went to the four-day school, school week. We got a number of teachers that all of a sudden-
They're talking positively.
-and were more resilient. When we opened the schools, we found parents that were overwhelmed, that were now coming back and being enthused and more enthused about things. So it seems to me that a big part of what we need to do is focusing on this resilience piece, but also focusing on being sure that we're taking care of ourselves in the process. And so that, that's what we're spending a little on here.
I think you said much better what I was trying to say with that idea of resilience need increases when we feel like we're making positive, productive contributions. But yes, you said that much better, Lee, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much for that information. We look forward to the updated second quarter information from you. All right, Agenda Item 10, Committee Updates, Board Referrals. There are none. Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Open Forum, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Is there any professional growth or development to report for the month?
I have a quick report. I attended the first season nine meeting last week and thought it was a wonderful, wonderful experience. I learned, I learned a great deal more about the function of CISA and the importance that it has been, for example, to the superintendents in encouraging mutual communication. We also talked, got a really excellent presentation on internships that are taking place at Aspire's Hospital for special needs students that has been extremely, extremely positive and effective. And the other cute thing was that they had a tree that they sold in the tree sale that got five hundred dollars. They were able to go to the hospital and that was just thrilled and all that. So it was a wonderful- So it was a wonderful experience, it's the first time we did that.
Well, thank you for stepping up to do that, Lee, and for that report. Any other individuals have anything to share, professional growth and development?
I will share, a couple weeks ago, I did a lecture for Office of Judicial Education for about 70 judges in the state on treaties, tribal sovereignty, and the Ho-Chunk Nation example. And I share that because of our requirement to meet the obligations of Act 31. And I just want to put that out there because we know many districts in the state do not fulfill the obligations of Act 31. And it becomes, it becomes very apparent when you talk to adults that ask questions that students should be learning in school. So I, I will just share that. Also, through University of Wisconsin Division of Extension, I am giving a lecture on January 8th on restorative justice with a focus on youth, if anybody's interested. Okay, next agenda item is Legislative Liaison Report. Clerk Lowe, do you have a legislative liaison update for us today?
So I only have one item for that. I didn't get to it, so if anyone has anything to add, I would welcome that. So on Wednesday, this Wednesday at 15:00, Governor Evers is going to have a listening session for the next budget. And indicated that they will be talking about the school budget. So if anyone wants to join and be a part of that listening session, you can find the link to register on the Facebook page. And if anyone has anything else to add, I would welcome that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Going on to Superintendent Commentary, Dr. Hiltz, any commentary tonight?
Yeah, please, just a little bit about the new quarantines. So as we've heard, there's a seven, a 10, and a 14-day option. We've, obviously, the traditional is the 14. We do support moving to the 10. We, I, I had shared with the board that we were going to make a break at the, at the semester. Just want to clarify, if, if a teacher were to start now, you know, or any certified staff, person who wouldn't work over break, their, their quarantine would already end after break starts. So for them, it makes no difference. And remember that when we talk about quarantines, the school district does not have the authority to make somebody not leave their home. This is just saying, "You can't come to school." So it's a little different than the, the health department's quarantine. We are talking today that if we have certified sta-, or non-certified staff, I guess we're certified, who are going to work over break, we will start implementing that 10-day now because for them, it could make a difference in terms of the number of sick days they have to use or maybe possibly taking days without pay or some of the FF-CRA. So, so for, for, for non-certified staff, we'll start using the, the 10-day today. Everybody else will be the 14 because, in effect, it really makes no difference in their quarantine. So questions about, about that?
I just think it's important to stress that that 10-day is only for people who have no symptoms.
Yes, thank you for saying that.
If you have symptoms, you can't shorten it.
Right, yep, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful, thank you, Dr. Hiltz. Okay, Agenda Item 11D, Presiding Officer Commentary. First, I'd like to reference the Board Member Liaison District Activity Report. And please enter this into the official record. Second, I would like to thank Dr. Hiltz and your team and the administrators for working with the elementary schedule because the board has received significant communications detailing how that Friday is being used, and it's just, you know, so many tasks. So thank you for taking a second look at that and, and being adaptable and pivoting to be able to support them. And we have a meeting next week, but there's no Presiding Officer Commentary then. So just, we'll say happy holidays and happy new year. And I'm sure we're all looking forward to 2021 and getting on the other side of this pandemic. But I will say, I am in frequent communications with board presidents and members throughout the state, and, you know, we're all in, in the same situation. So even though we hear some, you know, troubling data and information, it's not unique to us. And we will get to the other side, but hopefully, everybody can have a happy holiday and stay safe. Okay, with that, I am seeking a motion to enter into closed session. We have two agenda items to discuss in closed session, first being approving administrator contracts under Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c). And the second is Evaluation of Superintendent of Schools under Wisconsin State Statute 19.851(c). It does indicate reconvening in open session to take further action if necessary and appropriate. I don't anticipate we will be doing that. So I am seeking a motion to enter into closed session to discuss those two items.
Yes.
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 All right, here.